Good. Okay, I'm gonna reconvene the special meeting of the city council for March 26th. Is there anything to report, Mr. City Attorney?
No further action tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm gonna adjourn the special meeting of the Folsom City Council and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 26th, 2024. Could you please call the roll?
So as noted on the agenda, Councilmember Roarbaugh will be participating via teleconference tonight, and we anticipate that she'll be joining us around 7:00 PM. So Councilmembers Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here. If everybody will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there any agenda updates?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. There is an additional information transmittal for item eight on the agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and I believe they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay, excellent, thank you. We are actually going to take the joint city council agenda out of order right now in order to get that out of the way and then move on to the regular business of the day. So could you please do the roll call for our joint city council agenda?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And first item is consent.
I'll move item number nine if no one is willing to pull it in for comments.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, but would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes, okay, we are adjourned as the joint city council agenda and reconvened as the regular city council meeting, and first up is item number one.
So item number one is scheduled presentations, a presentation on the city of Folsom's procurement of professional services.
All right, thank you, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. I'm sure everybody behind me is just waiting for this item tonight, so I will try to make it quick so that we can get our public to probably the items that they wish to get to. Tonight's a presentation related to the professional services procurement for the city of Folsom. This is a brief outline of what I plan to cover this evening from kind of the statutes, whether they're state or federally required, and then I'll give a couple of examples at the end, and then some of the references that we used when developing kind of the outline in the presentation tonight. So on the federal side, this was enacted in 1972. It's known as the Brooks Act, and this was really set up for the protection of public health and safety. It related specifically to architects and engineering services, and what they require is a qualifications-based or QBS selection process, and this is from the federal level. If you want, as an agency, federal funding for a project you are working on, you must follow this process. They did extend this to charter cities and local agencies that wish to receive federal funding as well, which at times the city of Folsom does do, and many of our neighboring agencies. And essentially, you know, you can see the definition there, but it's essentially, you know, any contracts for architectural or engineering services are on the basis of demonstrated competence, qualification, and experience for that service provided. And I think in true fashion, the state of California followed and enacted their own, what many call either the Little Brooks Act or the Mini Brooks Act in 1990, and what they did is they followed the same QBS process, but they expanded and included some additional services, which include landscape architecture, architectural, environmental, land surveying, land surveying, or construction project management. And again, it's demonstrated on the basis of competence and professional qualifications. Local agencies, so in order, at least in the state of California, to procure those types of services, an agency must follow that QBS method. Agencies can, if they wish, adopt ordinances and/or procedures to allow that respective agency to follow that particular process, and so what we are working on internally is a manual for internal, for staff here at the city, so that when we are going through this process, one, we are consistent, but two, as staff changes, as time goes on, the next round of engineers or project managers are following the same suit, and probably most importantly, the city remains in line with state and federal law. And I do note in bullet number four that price cannot be a component in the ranking process. Now, price can be a component when you are making, when staff is making a recommendation to city council, so you can negotiate price, but it cannot be done until after you've ranked on the qualifications and competence of your respective project. And so the last bullet really just sums that up, is negotiating with the highest-ranked consultant firm to achieve, and this is compensation at which the agency head determines is fair and reasonable to the agency. In the case of the city, that would be the city manager, and I would, it's probably safe to say that she relies on staff to present that information to her, and then, if needed, would make any recommendations or changes differently. So for city professional services, now, our municipal code has a definition of what the city discusses as professional services, but I do want to underline the engineering, architectural, and environmental as part of what the city has, and so that's all identified in our municipal code. And there are three ways in which we here at the city could procure professional services, and it depends on whether or not you're under the federal or state law for the respective services, or if you're looking at some of these other services defined in our municipal code. One's a qualifications-based or QBS selection process. You have a pre-qualified list selection, and then you have what doesn't fit in either of those umbrellas. And so this just is a table that identifies what type of professional service there could be, and then which process that, or procurement method in which staff would follow. I won't read them all, but these, the important one, I think that we're all familiar with and here to talk about is really the, the middle one, or not the middle one, but the top one, which is the qualification-based selection and how we go about doing that. So we've also, as part of our manual, developed a decision matrix. So if we look at the list on the left, if any of those six services are needed, then we identified, have we already gone through a pre-qualification process where we've identified by experience, qualifications, technical ability, a shortlist, many like to refer that to as? If we have, then you can use that pre-qualification list method, and I'll describe kind of what the parameters are for that, and if you haven't, or if the department hasn't done that, then you go through the whole QBS method, and that has a certain set of steps, and I'll go through that. If the service that is needed is not on the list on the left, then you can either use a pre-qualifications-based or pre-qualified list, or you can issue a request for proposals. So using a pre-qualified list or developing a pre-qualified list, so what an agency or what the city will do here is a department will issue a request for qualifications. So essentially, we're asking a consultant for a list of their qualifications for a professional service or professional services that we might need. A lot of what we do in our department is design-related for pumps, pipelines, things of that nature, pump stations. The municipal code outlines how we are supposed to do that in terms of issuing a notice and how many days that needs to be out for notice. We will include the request for qualifications on the city's website, but we also have an outside vending company that's a bid procurement service, which we include that on there as well. And if we know there are certain, you know, engineering firms or consultant firms that maybe don't check this regularly, then we can also reach out directly and let those firms know, hey, the city's issued a RFP or an RFQ, go look at it, it's, you know, at whatever, whether it's the city's webpage or the outside procurement service. If we do have a pre-qualified list, what we will typically do is, let's say there's a list of six, list of three, we will ask each of those three for a scope and a fee based on a particular project you're working on. From that, you can then utilize the cost or price as a scoring component, because you've, we, or the respective department, has already gone through the process to pre-qualify based on qualifications, and essentially using a qualifications-based selection method to get to a, a shorter list of firms. And then we will have at least three city staff evaluate the proposals and the cost, and look at the rankings then, using what we call a best value method, and that will include the experience qualifications, maybe specific project understanding for a particular project that you are looking for services for, and then cost and price. And so we outline how that's done, the procedures of how to do that, how the ranking is scored, and then how you factor in cost as part of that, and then ultimately, you add up all the points, and the consultant with the highest point value is the best value. So the qualification-based or QBS method, it's very similar, but in this case, you're issuing a request for proposals for these specific services that are outlined here. Again, the noticing requirements will fall in line with our municipal code. Again, we'll include the RFP on the city's website and the outside procurement service. We can reach out directly to vendors, or staff can, to let them know, but in this process, proposals and costs are submitted in two separate envelopes, or in the case of email, two separate folders through email. And you cannot open the costs until after you've gone through the ranking. I discussed, you know, what the ranking is, but again, it's, the proposals are evaluated by at least three city staff. You can have more if it reaches out to maybe a broader audience within the city. If you need to have interviews as part of the process, you can have interviews, you're not required to have interviews, but this does give you an opportunity to ask some more questions, get some one-on-one, some face time with the project team, and, you know, questions and answers come up during the interview process that you might not have thought about when you're writing the, the proposal, so it's a good opportunity to really get an understanding of the consultants that you're talking to, and whether or not they truly understand, maybe verbally, as to what the project is about. You negotiate the final scope and fee. If you're unable to negotiate the final scope and fee, let's say the consultant you select, you open up the cost envelope, and their budget was $450,000, maybe the city budget was only $400,000. Is there a way to negotiate to get to the $400,000 mark, to align with what you have budgeted? If you're able to, all is well. If you're not, you do have the opportunity to talk to the second highest-ranked firm, and you can go down the list so long as they meet whatever, you know, your minimum scoring requirements are. If not, you can cancel the proposal and reissue to start the process over. Not something we prefer to do, but something that we can do. And then the last is what doesn't fall into maybe the previous two categories, and you can see what the, in this case, you can issue a request for proposals, but you are allowed, because it is not a professional service as identified by the Little Brooks Act or the Brooks Act, you can then incorporate cost as part of this process, because you're not required to by, by either state or federal mandate. And again, you know, we follow a very similar path, is identified in the municipal code in terms of advertisement, same thing we've done with the previous two, and then, like I mentioned, the difference in this case is you can issue cost as a percentage or a number of points related to.
A component.
Yes, as a component. Now, we've identified 25 points right now. I know there may be talk, or there are thoughts, maybe you can have a range, because you, you might want to factor in cost as a higher factor, so we're, you know, open to any potential discussion related to that, but this does identify cost as a component. And then again, evaluating the proposals by three city staff. If you need to do interviews, you can, and then again, the highest point value would lead to the best value. So, you know, with following all of this, there are potential consequences or risk of not following the rules, so to say, and again, you could not be in alignment with state or federal law, depending on the professional service that you need. You could lose state or federal funding, because typically in grant applications, they do say, hey, you need to follow X law, and if you're not following that, they could find out, and you could get funding revoked, or just eliminated from the process altogether. Bid protest could happen, so, you know, you could get a consulting firm that says, hey, wait a minute, you had cost as part of the process, but you're not supposed to, and so that then could lead to more time having to cancel the proposal and then reissue everything, and that's not something we necessarily want to do. Potential for, you know, there's increased project costs, because if you're hiring, or if you potentially hire somebody that doesn't have the qualifications or the experience, and you just based everything on price, are you truly getting the best project outcome? Or are we gonna have to spend time fixing things later on down the road? Again, and that kind of comes to additional lifecycle costs, and then ultimately, is the public health or safety, is there a potential for that to be compromised? So these are just some of the examples. This is the second to last slide in terms of what we might do in terms of process. So I won't read them all, but you could see different processes would require different procurement methods. If, I'll use the second one as an example, the Water Vision Planning Study, that did not require a QBS process, because it was a planning study, we weren't getting into significant engineering design or anything along that nature, so it was really more water supply, planning, water resources than it was pump, pipeline, station design. So we used the RFP method where we did include cost as a component of our ranking, but say bridge design, pump station design, it's either the QBS or pre-qualified list that we would use. And then lastly, these are just references that were used. So the Brooks Act, as I mentioned, at the federal level, the California government codes that are referenced here, 4525 through 4528, identifies the specific requirements for California. Getting information from the California Legislative Council is how things would occur in California, our municipal code, and then these are the neighboring agencies that I reached out to as part of this process, but also looking at their respective municipal codes to get information from them as well. And that is my last slide.
Excellent. Any questions? YK, your area of specialization, do you have any questions?
My area of specialization.
Of interest, let's say that, yes.
Thank you. You know, just to make the comment, I'm the first time seeing as all 200 of you, so if you have any questions, maybe I, as a council member, I may have some questions too. Thank you, Marcus, for very detailed one. I'll make it short for him. QBC, qualification-based selection, to shortlist the qualified bidders and put it in a list, is that my understanding? I want, there is no cost there?
No cost.
QBC, you know, we have a hundred vendors, we got it, we qualified everybody, and we put it in a list, you know what, 10 of them are good to serve City of Folsom. Is that the right assumption from my end?
So there's two ways. So one is if, if you're looking to select somebody, say we issued this to 100 vendors, and you're looking to select one out of that 100, then you, for the designated professional service, you would follow the QBS selection method. Another method that we use in our department is, we know that each year we have four to six capital improvement projects. Most, if all of them, require a designed component or a registered engineer to stamp and approve. In that case, we will, say, take 100 vendors, we will narrow that down to 10 vendors, and we pre-qualify those 10. And then separately, after we do that, there's another step where we will then ask four or five, or three of the 10 to say, hey, here's a particular project, we see your background, you've done these types of projects before at another agency. We will then ask that particular group for the scope and the fee, and then we will select based on using, sorry, using cost as a component. But to go from 10 or 100 to one, and we're selecting one, we use the QBS, which does not have cost as a factor until after you select and get that to the number one-ranked consulting firm.
Makes sense, thank you. I think we are on the same page there. My only question is, I know, I think, thank you, Mayor, for saying it's, I have been working on this one, you know, with Elaine and the team, and my colleagues as well. My thought process right now, after seeing the first time this, you know, defining the process, can we make that list? Right now, not every department has a decent qualified business vendor's list. Sometimes three for some department, sometimes five for some departments. Can we stick to at least a decent 10, a good number? Because this is the process you're expecting us to comment, and when we have a $2 million project, or $5 million project, we release it to all 10, let them compete. So the bottom line, what I'm trying to do here, best value, cost must be a factor. Yes, the 10 are qualified already. One may be doing for Davis, the Roseville, to the Rockland, that's okay, they never done for City of Folsom, that's fine. But we must release all the 10 and let them talk, let them compete, come back with, when we expect $3 million, somebody may come at $2.25 million, 750K savings. I'm just going to quote the example. I think when we are building the south of 50, a fire station, our fire team, they did that. They, they outreach to 12 or nine different vendors. We thought it is going to be 10 million, we end up at 8.4 million. That's a good deal. So as long as we can define a decent list to every department, whether it is a $100,000 bid or $5 million bid, it doesn't matter. Send it to all 10, let them compete, and get the responses, and evaluate. 10 is a reasonable number in my mind, if, if, and I'm not saying the cost at the beginning. When you are shortlisting from 100 to 10, no cost piece, but when we are about to award, there must be a cost piece. And 25% is the value. I'm okay if my colleagues wants to agree, they all 10 are qualified, well-qualified, just increase the percent from 25 to 30, 35, 40, let them compete.
So, so YK, if I can add to that?
Yeah.
I was one, I think I was the one that made the suggestion of perhaps having a range as a recommendation, and, but it, it goes hand in hand with the fact that there are, as you and I have discussed, multiple kinds of selections that need to happen. The ones that are controlled by the Brooks Act and the Mini Brooks Act literally can't be based, can't be a selection based on price until you have chosen who is most qualified, and then you negotiate with them. If you can't reach an agreement, then you move to firm number two. There are a whole range of other similar-looking professional services that aren't covered by the Brooks or the Mini Brooks Act. Those would be ones where a sliding scale, depending on how rare the service is, would make some sense in terms of having a price component involved. And then there's a whole nother, there's, there's more chapters to this story that Marcus is gonna come back and tell us.
Yeah, yeah.
That are related specifically to construction procurement, because that's unique from professional services, even though obviously, construction is a profession. And there's also just general procurement of material, which we do a lot of here. So, so all of those will have a similar visit back to the council to give some more refined things about those. So just some context for everybody, because I know you all came here to talk about procurement.
I know, sorry, we are taking, you know, this is the first time we are seeing, as you are seeing. It's, it's a good one, you know, I see some nods in the tent, but thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought I'd clarify that bit, because it may, it may slide by some people.
Yeah. Marcus, you know, the other day when you're explaining to me the Brooks Act, out of curiosity, I, I Googled Brooks Act by opening up this one, right? And at the end of that paragraph, it says, professional services required at a fair and reasonable price. So they are taking a reasonable price into account. It's not just, somebody is super, he's going to charge half a million, just give it to him. No, there is somebody else is reasonably charging for $175,000. There is one procurement, by the way, one of those today's consentizing, you can see it? There is one vendor is asking for $550 million, the other one is 158K. We can't go on the QBC there exactly, even though the 500 guy is the best. I, I do understand the rework, though. Please don't take me wrong, I came from that world. Somebody quotes the low bid, and again, change order, and again, change order, and then it is going to be cost. I get that, that's why we have a reference checks. We have to, anyway.
But we also see that, just as a note, we also see that with the state of California. They almost always take the lowest bid, and then you've got change orders, and you've got a lot of changes that happen throughout the process.
It is, that's why the QBC, that's where you are reading down those 90 people who are sending the 10 change orders every time. No, that's their business style, they are not suited for, anyway, my short recommendation here, can we make that list reasonable 10? And when we have 100,000 or 5 million, 10 million, send it to all 10, let them quote, if I'm following you, Mayor, whatever you are saying, and when we open up all those 10, we will know who is the competitive pricing, and still we can negotiate from that lowest bidder. So that's my recommendation. I'm, I'm not sure whether I'm seeing that here, if that's what the aim, because this is the first time it is coming to us, it's going to be some refinement processes. If it is going to be refined, if that's the nutshell, I'm okay with this.
Yep, and Councilmember Chalamchela, I, I understand kind of the point you're making, and I think, at least for me, knowing our department's operations, I know how big or small we can make the list, obviously, talking to the other departments. There may not even be 10, say, for a roundabout design, so, you know, we'd have to work with, say, Public Works, and maybe they have six that can do roundabout design, or bridge design, or something, and so I think each department, that number may be slightly different, just because 10 might be difficult to get to, but I understand the point of, okay, could we create a list that then competes amongst themselves, or knows that, hey, there's six of us that are vying for this project, we better sharpen our pencils and really be, you know, considerate of how we're pricing, or how many hours we have to certain, you know, project leads, or certain hours at a respective rate.
I'm absolutely okay with that. I, as a council member, I don't want to get into the, you know, how to get that number, but I want sincere efforts, reaching out to those dozen cities around us, collecting, who exactly is doing this kind of thing for City of Roseville, City of Rockland, David? As long as we try, we end up with the six, I'm perfectly okay with it. I know when I saw the roundabout, I was looking at Vice Mayor here, yep, you know, there may not be many vendors, who does the roundabout? I'm okay with that, but at least put the goal for 10. If there is a justification to city manager, why we are unable to reach 10, I'm not going to get there, it is your administration. That's my one recommendation, and Mayor, if we can bet the, the range on the cost, I'm perfectly okay with it. To start with a minimum 25, I'm fine with it, but sometimes pure services, State of California, I can quote this number, they go up to 50%. If we want to put the range, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, my suggestion was just that we give the staff some flexibility to choose a range that is suitable to the particular procurement, and that 25 be a floor.
Floor.
And a higher range if we felt like we could get better information or better pricing that way to, to do that. I, I do have a question. Was there any part in your investigation that left you with the feeling that we may need to make amendments to the municipal code to kind of pull some of this stuff in permanently?
You know, and, and I didn't talk directly to Steve about this, but there, I think the way the municipal code's written now keeps the city in line with what the requirements are at the state or federal level, just because that's, you know, what we have to follow. So it, I would, I don't want to, it's kind of implicit in the sense that the laws are out there, and obviously, you know, the city follows the, the laws that were required to do so. And I, I think we might create more challenges, trying to really narrow this down and funnel it into, I don't want to say a box, but try to get over-descriptive, and then ultimately have to come back at some point, like, oh, well, wait a minute, we forgot this, or.
Oh, yeah, I was more concerned that there was some glitch in the code that made us not perfectly compliant with some aspect of this already, because we've, we've run across a couple of those here and there, so, okay, excellent. So, so I guess for my part, I would just look forward to some further discussion on this topic and some of the other procurement processes, or other procurement areas. this topic and some of the other procurement processes or other procurement areas that we need to be, you know, sort of trying to be consistent with. And I think Councilmember Chalamchala's, Chalamchala's recommendation to keep our pre-qualified pools as full and healthy as possible is, is an excellent one.
Yeah, that's, that's the only one. I just want to make a, you know, a thank you note to, you know, Elaine and your team. At least we are putting the structure to the city procurement, you know, give or take. This city is buying almost close to $150 million worth of things through the procurement process. So it's a lot of money. So we put the, you know, money and the, the cost into base and save a dollar, penny, cent. It's important. So now, it's going to be across all departments. I want to thank you. Marcus explained very well in my agenda item that everyone is going to follow the same thing, whether I see the evaluation, you, one of the, you know, residents will see in the best interest of transparency, it should be clear to everyone. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. I, thank you very much. And I just, just for some context, since all of you are here in the audience and a lot of you that aren't here all the time, you know, the, there's been a great deal of talk this year about revenue issue and the city's budget and things that we want to spend additional money on and a potential sales tax measure later in the year. We have to work on these problems on multiple tracks. It's not just trying to get more revenue, it's trying to be judicious with the money that we have. So we're trying to make sure that we're being as careful with the, the dollars that we do have and before we start asking for additional funds. So that's, this is in service of that goal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just interject, there are chairs now set up outside the doors. So if you're currently standing in front of a door, I ask you to be sure that you, you've cleared the door. The fire chief wants to keep those clear. And if you can't clear it, please take one of the chairs and out in the lobby, you can hear just fine out there. Thank you.
Great. Okay. That takes us to our next item, which is business from the floor. This is the time of the meeting when you can address the city council on items that are not already on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not have any requests to speak under this item tonight.
Okeydoke. All right. Next up, consent calendar. Anything pulled for discussion, council?
I'll move items two through seven if anyone, unless someone wants to pull one.
No, I'm good. I'm good to second.
Second? Okay. So we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar in totality. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchala?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay. Which brings us to the, I suspect maybe the showstopper and why there's so many faces that I don't normally see at these meetings here. I, I want to start out before we get the, actually, before we get the presentation with, with just some comments about this item. There's, I asked a super discreet question of the staff and they gave me the answer that I was looking for. And it was in service of an idea that came to me, gosh, almost a year ago probably, last summer, when we had a whole number of things that were hot topics at the time. And it occurred to me that we might be able to achieve a few different goals with a single move. And I could be completely wrong, because lots of the commentary that I got in my email was somewhere between the "you're crazy" and "you're expletive crazy." So acknowledged. But basically, th- this was the thinking and this sprung from my head, so blame me if you have to blame somebody. So the number of things that I thought maybe we'd be able to address, we had, we, we kicked off an, an investigation and a master planning effort for the River District, okay? The key part of the River District in terms of property that the city controls is the corporation yard, okay? The corporation yard bleeds over into a place that is kind of used as auxiliary space for storage of materials, which we commonly refer to as the Y property. It's where the trains are parked. The PSVRR uses part of it for all of their equipment. Their equipment kind of leaks over into the other part that the city also uses for storing materials. So you've all seen that over there at Bidwell and Folsom Boulevard. But ultimately, we have two goals in mind, or I had two goals in mind. One, that we own a piece of property south of 50 for a new corporation yard. Eventually, we need to move our, our operations that are at the current corporation yard to that new location. And there's no time like the present to start planning a move, because that one will be extraordinarily complicated, time-consuming and very expensive. And a very small piece of that is vacating the public works activity that's happening at the Y property, okay? So first objective was to try and come up with a timetable and a reason to vacate the miscellaneous storage that's happening at the Y property. And then in service of eventually moving out of the full corp yard so that the master planning effort that we are doing for the River District can come to some fruition in that area. So that's two things. That, that Y property, it's currently used for a lot of storage of rail equipment. It's used for servicing rail equipment that PSVRR uses and all their excursion train equipment is there. It's likely to continue to be used for, at least in part, for some kind of rail. And lots of people have suggested over the years, making a rail-style park out of it, okay? Or a rail-themed park of one, one sort or another. So the potential to do that could be kicked off with some improvements to the station master house that is there, to make it, stabilize it so it stays there and doesn't go away, because it's a historic building, and then to upgrade the area around it. And the idea of spending some money in the Y to do that included fixing the fences, upgrading that building and doing some new landscaping there so that the straight frontage along Folsom Boulevard was more attractive, okay? Including adding some screening to parts of the fence. So that, that all was running through my head and I'm going to keep going for a while here, so please be patient. It has been suggested that that intersection at Bidwell and Folsom Boulevard is the gateway to the historic district, okay? Some of you undoubtedly had that in your prepared comments for tonight. I believe that to be true and I believe that the view that we have currently is pretty shabby in terms of what you see when you glance over there. Old railcars, stacks of crossing gates that may or may not be functional and piles of wood chips, okay? And haphazard landscaping, a really nice fence, but one that you can see right through. So that was all going on. And then we were, had a number of meetings, and this is actually a topic that has been going on the entire time I've been on the council, is the, the angst over our growing problem with homelessness, okay? We had last summer, a, a real issue with people being disruptive on Sutter Street and the FHDA membership and lots of the business owners down there were really at loose ends about the stuff that was happening down there. So, so all of that was going on when this thought came to my mind, which was, if we can get some money together, we can clean up the Y. In the short run, we may be able to put a modest piece of service center there and I'm going to explain what I mean, because I don't think I mean what you guys accused me of it by email. We could fix the house, fix the landscaping, screen the fence better, okay? And encourage Public Works to take their piles of stuff and put them somewhere else, encourage PSVRR to sort through the crossing gates and determine what was useful and what was not and move those out, okay? Okay. So first idea was there's era funding still around, maybe we can get some from the county to help supplement all of that. The county said absolutely not, okay? So most of what I was talking about has no funding, okay? So the last thing that we did was try and figure out what the minimum improvements would be necessary to be able to put a job-style trailer on the site and only for the singular purpose of giving, or two purposes. And this is my idea, okay? And you can come up and tell me that I'm crazy or tell me, please don't do that, I, I get it. Was that we could have very limited services, only those that the good people of the various agencies that provide outreach to the homeless, to try and make homeless people, former homeless people, to give them a workspace so they can do the office part of their job and, when necessary, to provide counseling on an individual basis to people who are being disruptive somewhere in the city that the police department could deliver to them, okay? I see you're nodding, it's okay. I understand that that's controversial and problematic for some of you. And I want to ask that you consider that we have been for years, as a council, myself particularly, accused pretty regularly of doing nothing. And either not doing enough to police the city, which I don't think is true, I think our police department does an excellent job of policing the city and dealing with the crime aspects, the crimes that we have to deal with. We are, we remain handcuffed by the decisions of the Ninth Circuit Court as to where we can and where we can't enforce a ban on camping, okay? And we've, you know, consistently also been accused of not helping the agencies that are doing the work to try and make homeless people former homeless people, that are doing it on a day-in, a day-out basis, the hard work that they're doing here in our city. And we've been accused of grudgingly providing them small amounts of money. I'm not taking questions right now. So, so that all being said, okay? The police department remains the one that has to deal with the crime problem, okay? What I was trying to consider was what could we do to supplement or support the agencies that are doing the work to try and convert homeless people to former homeless people? That's extremely difficult, it's costly, it's time-consuming and it requires one-on-one constant intervention with people, okay? And we're not going to, I, I never suggested that we build housing there. In fact, I made that a plain bottom-line thing when I talked to anybody about it. I was not planning to put a doorbell or a sign or a front door on it that you can knock on and come in, drop in for help, okay? That was not the purpose. It was one-on-one services and office space for agencies that are doing that work. I, I want to apologize to Jean Schuman and Jake's Journey Home. I asked for her help in devising some elements of what might be useful, but it became, I think she's gotten more attention about this than she deserves, needs or ever intended to get, okay? This is not a project specifically for Jean or for Jake's Journey Home, although I will say that along with Heart of Folsom and along with Powerhouse Ministries, those three groups and others are doing incredible work in our community to try and convert homeless people to former homeless people. And occasionally, my softer side leaks out of me and I try and do something to help. That's what this was all intended to do. Now, there's no reason for you guys to repeat the thought that you don't like the idea of doing any kind of service in the Y property. That was delivered loud and clear and I see you all here for that purpose probably. But what would be really useful as a dialogue tonight, that would be super productive, I think, and I ask that you try and consider this when you make your, whatever commentary you want to make. The, the question I think would be really productive is, is there support or service that you do think that the city of Folsom should provide to those agencies that do this work? Okay? If you can define that, then we have something to work with in terms of what we should or shouldn't do. And if it's nothing, that's okay. You, you can say that. But if it's something, your ideas are really useful and valuable to us. And if anything good comes of the fact that I got all of you guys out here on a Tuesday night, a couple of good brainstorming items would be really, really useful. So with that all said, the, the last bit, and the reason why the Y property crossed my mind at all in the first place, is that if we're going to have services of any kind at any location in the city, Y property or anywhere else, okay? I, my preference, my strong preference would be for it to be on city-controlled property so that we are holding the power cord and can pull the plug if it doesn't work or if we get unintended consequences, okay? So I can't do that, we can't do that, you can't force us to do that if it's at one of our faith community sites or if it's on private property, okay? We just have to live with whatever anybody wants to do on those sites and by and large, they'll do the right thing, but I'm just saying, I would like to be able to, be able to pull the plug if it's not working, okay? So there's all of that. So, and, and then with regard to the staff report, the staff titled the report correctly, but I asked them for just one single thing, which is, what would it cost to bring utilities across the yard to the location that seems to make sense for a job trailer to be placed and to get a job trailer moved in there and make a couple of parking spaces, okay? So that's what their staff report addressed for me. I did not ask them to analyze the totality of the problem with homelessness, the services that should or shouldn't be provided, the relative merit of the Y property against any other piece of property in the city. And those are discussions that I expect that we will have at some point, but the reason I asked for what would it cost to do this is that, just like appliance shopping, if you don't set a budget for yourself, you can't start picking out features of your appliances, right? So if all you can spend is $500 on a refrigerator, you're not going to get the fanciest ice maker and Wi-Fi connection, okay? So what I wanted was a data point so that we had a sense of what it would cost to do this minimal amount of construction to support the agencies that are doing this work so that if and when we do have money, and right now, we do not have money, we probably won't have money in the fut, in this next year's budget and, you know, depending on what happens with the sales tax measure or other things, we may never have the ability to implement anything like this. It, it was never intended to be a foregone conclusion that it would absolutely be at the Y property, what the services would be, what the, what the guardrails would be on it or anything else. So, so take, please take all that into account, okay? We are a million miles from deciding to actually do something. What I was trying to do is put one flag in the ground and say, okay, if we want to do something, it may cost this, so that we can then decide when the time is right, what the, what the guardrails are, what the services would be and whether or not we want to do that. So they'll be, we'll, we'll invite you all back in some, you know, really inflammatory way in the future and we'll talk about this again. So anyway, please keep your, you know, lightness in your hearts and be generous with your comments. I am going to let Mark do his presentation and then we will take public comment. When, if, if you still want to comment on this, just know that I am going to make a motion right after we get through with public comment to accept the, accept the information that's been provided to us and not take any further action at this time. So just so you know, that's coming. And then I think that's probably more than enough preamble. I will say, when it is time for public comment, I am going to gavel you if you go beyond three minutes. You get three minutes and you get only your own three minutes, no trading of time. So make your comment, let the next person comment, no bundling of time, okay? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rorba joined the meeting by phone at about 7:18 PM. She is out of town.
Terrific.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mark Rackavan, your Public Works Director. And as, as the mayor just pointed out, the question that was posed to us, oops, was not, should we put a homeless services trailer on the Y property? The question was, could we? And so that's going to be the focus of my presentation this evening. For those that are not familiar, the Y property is, is a little over three-acre site located just north of Bidwell Street, east of Folsom Boulevard. It's a former junction of the Sacramento Placerville Railroad way back in the day. It's currently broken into four discreet- It's currently broken into four discrete uses right now, one of which is the aforementioned railroad operations of the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad. Property occupied by, it's actually the supervisor's house and grounds, which is on the historic register. Down on the lower end, in the blue, is a portion of the railroad that's owned by a joint powers authority, which allows PSVRR to also store some of the railroad equipment down there. This evening, we're focusing on the remaining part, which is shown in green. This is the auxiliary corporation yard. It's not much to look at, it's essentially a stockpile location. I'll go through some of the other issues or operations that we perform there. And then the railroad group also stores equipment there. It is accessed by two gates, one over here on the west side off of Oakdale Street, and then another one down here in the corner by Bidwell Street. Why are we on the Y property? We used to be over off of Sibley Street, over by Levy Road, up until about 2010, when this site was either donated or sold to a company that then turned it into the Granite City Apartments, which is an affordable apartment complex. So we had to find a new home for several of our corp yard operations. A lot of what you see here is related to our waste and recycling program. That was moved to the corporation yard at Liedestorf Street. But a lot of the stockpiles, concrete washout, whatnot, had to be moved to the Y property. So I'll quickly go through some of the really cool things that we're doing out here at the Y. We have our concrete washout and dump. PSVRR has a storage shed that is, faces out onto their railroad operation. And then FHDA in the chamber have a couple of C containers with stuff that they're storing on the property. Compost, mulch, pipe lay-down area, these are all stockpiles that then get distributed out into the community from this location. Whenever we have a storm or we do maintenance of trees and shrubs in the area, we bring it here and pile it up until we have enough to either take it to the dump or to turn it into woodchips. And this picture was taken in the summertime. There's normally a couple mountains of sand here, but we didn't need it in the summertime. Very important to our community to have a sand stockpile as we enter the rainy season for sandbags and whatnot. Here's one of our piles of sand. And then lastly, down here, these are the crossing arms that the mayor mentioned that PSVRR is storing on-site. We have boulders that we use for channel lining, storm drain lining, logs and wood chipping, and then some more railroad storage. So the other key element to this is this large area in the middle so that we can operate our large vehicles, that we can bring in dump trucks, flatbeds, things of that sort, that can move around on the site and take advantage of all these stockpiles and operations that you see here. Mayor mentioned that the corporation yard has a short life to it, that if the revenue district master plan gets implemented and eventually that site gets redeveloped, our corporation yard on Liedestorf Street would be relocated all the way south of White Rock Road at Prairie City Road. So having auxiliary sites like this will become even more important in the future when the corporation yard is all the way at the south end of the community. Whether, you know, and I'm not saying that this auxiliary use at the Y is the highest and best use for this location, I'm quite certain it isn't. But if we're not going to be here, I need to find somewhere else to do these operations north of Highway 50, just so my operation remains cost-effective and avoids having to, you know, be driving back and forth to the new corp yard site. Ideally, I'd like to have two such sites, one in the central part of town and one on the north side of town. I don't know where those sites would be, but if you're going to tell me that I have to move, I will do my best to find a site. So the question then was, again, could we place a trailer on this site? And again, my motivation was, could I put a trailer on this site without having to move my corporation yard activities? So, again, I don't know what's, what exact size trailer is being considered here. I don't know if anybody really does yet. So I used an example of our street operations trailer, which is, which is at our existing corp yard. This is a double-wide, it's twenty, about 2,400 square feet, has room for four offices, a restroom, a large common area, and then an access ramp. This is, this is the type of trailer that I'm using as a model. Again, doesn't necessarily mean that this is what's being evaluated for this site, this is just what I used as my model. So a trailer of that size and configuration, I looked at two potential places in the Y property where you could put it, one over here by the Bidwell Gate and the other over here by the Oakdale Gate. Both of these have impacts to our operations and to some of our, some of the other folks that exist on the site. So for example, Trailer Site One, I'd have to relocate my concrete washout area and the surplus concrete. PSVRR shed would probably have to be relocated, and potentially even the containers of the Historic District Association if we needed to provide room for parking. We would also want to add a supplemental gate and fence to secure corp yard operations from the trailer site. There are also, you know, this is common to the entire historic district, but there is no ADA access to the site. There are no sidewalks in most of the historic district. And then, you know, there wouldn't be any paved parking per se, we'd just, you know, leave enough room for, you know, a handful of vehicles. There is water service to this particular site. I don't know if it's sized properly for whatever the use would be, but we would have to bring in a full set of utilities, sewer, water, electricity, gas, whatnot, telecommunications would have to be extended to this site. Site number two has very many of the similar issues. This is the one over off of Oakdale. This one potentially would require the relocation of the surplus gate equipment that PSVRR has on the site and some of our stockpile locations. It could be potentially shifted a little further to the north. And again, if we're talking about a slightly smaller trailer than what I'm envisioning, it might fit on the site a little bit better. Again, a supplemental gate and fence to isolate corp yard operations from the trailer. And then the mayor mentioned that the existing fence along Oakdale, which you can see up here, is, you know, is see-through, you know, so there'd have to be some screening added to that, whether it'd be something natural, like, you know, planted shrubs or just adding something to the fence to obscure the view. The cost, you know, again, there are no utilities to this site, they'd have to be extended here. The site would have to be prepped to, with a foundation, you know, for the trailer to be placed on. So the cost of preparing the site, placing a trailer this size, was estimated by my staff at about $225,000 to $250,000 upfront costs, assuming the trailer is leased, like our street operations trailer. That one has a cost of about $2,200 a month to lease, and so that's another cost we'd have to consider, plus the ongoing cost of utilities, maintenance, and just care for the trailer. These are all, and as was mentioned earlier, none of these costs are in our budget, they're, they're, that is yet to be determined where that money would come from if this were moved forward.
May I ask a question? Oh, you're done.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna thank the public for their support for my corp yard operations and, and then I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question about the lease of it. Hypothetically, say we do this. Does the lease of the property have to go through the Surplus Land Act for it to be used for a purpose such as this?
I'll leave that one for the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Councilmember and Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It depends on the purpose of the lease, the proposed lease, and depends on the details of the lease. It is possible, the Surplus Land Act has recently amended to include leases as part of the requirement for the state to provide oversight.
And in that case, then the...
But we're not talking about leasing to another entity or person here. We're talking about the city leasing a trailer for city use. That is totally different.
Okay, right. So in this case here, it would be leased to a non-city organization, hypothetically?
Of property?
Property, yeah.
With trailer?
The trailer.
Okay.
The trailer.
In this hypothetical example that may be infuriating people...
Well, I mean, here, I mean, there are questions.
The building would be leased by the city. How we arrange tenancy of those is to be determined. That hasn't been discussed.
Certainly not with something like the trailer.
Okay.
Mark, so the main corporation yard is not that far from here. Is there not room at the main corporation yard for these, like the concrete wash area and that sort of thing?
Not right now. You know, you've been involved with me in all the discussions about the SB 1383 organics recycling program that the state mandated that we participate in. This is the green cans that are being distributed throughout the public. So right now, the corp yard is full of a lot of different colored cans, not only the green cans for the organics recycling program, but all the new cans for the Folsom Plan area. You know, a lot of the stuff that you saw in that earlier slide that used to be out at the Sibley property are, are bins that we rent out, you know, for commercial use, for construction projects, our dumpsters. Those are all occupying the space at the corp yard. So we just simply don't have the room to do everything at the existing corp yard site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And more trucks too, because of the green waste pickup every week.
That's correct. Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to do public comment now. Everybody's welcome to make comments. Again, I think workshopping the idea of what services at any location we would consider as a city would be the most useful feedback that could be used by the city council. The thing that is not particularly helpful is suggesting other locations. Because that's a whole discussion and another can of worms, and I guarantee you, if I had picked any other location, this room would be equally full. Okay? Because Folsom is pretty dense, so there's people that would be interested in any other site in the same way that you're interested in this one. So, public comment.
So Mayor, we do have about 31 speakers requesting to speak under this item, item number eight. I'm going to go ahead and call Jean Schuman, followed by Tori Schuman and Nicole Schuman first. If you go ahead and approach the podium, let me know when you're ready, and I'll go ahead and set the timer for three minutes.
And I am going to be on it as far as the three minutes today, please. Jean, please. So...
I know that there's a three-minute limit, can I use my time?
We're not yielding time tonight. It's three minutes per speaker.
All right.
There's, there's three hours of commentary that are in that stack right now, so...
I'll do my best, because I've been sitting there editing to get it down to three minutes. Forgive me if I'm stumbling. Good evening, council. My name is Jean Schuman. I'm a stakeholder here, I own a house, and I run a nonprofit, Jake's Journey Home. We're a mobile unit here in Folsom, and we provide services for our unhoused veterans and community members for, to create a life of success and sustainability. Perspective is what you see and experience. Everyone has a different perspective, and I've seen and experienced the criminal activity in this historic Folsom district, in my area and throughout Folsom. If we as a community do not address the unhoused situation, the state of California, and the continual laws that are created in the dark of night, well, the federal funds and state funds the city receives always come with strings attached. They will hamstring our ability to bring any semblance of safety and human dignity. It needs to be addressed and it needs to be fixed. Jake's Journey Home does mobile outreach in this community for the unhoused and at-risk folks six days a week. Easy to say, we know them most times by name, and we know their stories. We offer basic needs and we help to navigate our complicated and confusing system of care for rehabilitation, mental health, job skills, veteran benefits, and criminal record, community service assist, and much more. We're working to create a clean and safe program with the Folsom Historic District, a veteran housing program in Eldorado Hills, and a collaboration with Snowline about dementia, elderly, and homelessness, just to name a few. Our caseload is over 300 today. The most important things that I want to jump to, I want to share some data in the last three months here in Folsom, strictly the last three months. Our field interactions are 1,829 people. Domestic violence, nine. Assessments for programs, 83. 23 of those were done in the shelter and 60 on the streets. Unique individuals are 416 people. That's the transient population that everybody's saying they see. Folsom unhoused, it varies from 80 to 156. Family reunification, we've sent four folks to other states to be with their families in long-term programs. Criminal record assist, 16. Rail passes and bus passes, 104. DMV vouchers, 73. Oh, jeez. Female program placement, seven. Male program placement, four. Rehab, seven. Outside referrals, 16. Housing assists, 17. And veteran housing and services, 41. All of this, that's enough data for the proactive side of at-risk folks. This is all active, and I stress, it's non-criminal, ongoing, and does not require police assistance. So with all these words, all the data, we need the population here that is really unchecked. We need a centralized support, case management, community support networks, resource coordination, prevention, and outreach. And an assistance center can play a crucial role in addressing the complex needs of at-risk individuals and helping them regain stability and independence. Where the center exists is really the question. The goal is to get folks off the street. Permanent Center offers us one central hub to have folks come to us to be able to provide certain things like showers and meals, things that they need to feel human, to be happy and successful. And as a conclusion, we can't...
That is a perfect way. That's a perfect time to wrap that up. I will say, thank you, Jean. Jake's Journey Home, along with others here in Folsom. Jean herself is the expert on this topic, how to convert a homeless person to a former homeless person. So if you have questions about that process and what that hard work is, she would be the right resource to reach out to. Thank you.
Right. I guess it's hard to hear her.
Okay, the microphones, we're turning it up. Who's next?
So Tori Schuman, if you go ahead and approach the podium?
You can, you can decline to comment also, that's okay.
I do decline.
Okay, thank you.
My mom...
She hit it, hit it right on the head, yeah.
Thank you.
And then Nicole Schuman?
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for taking the time to allow us to speak on this stuff. I'm just seconding what my mom had stated in offering a space for us and the other entities to continue to serve the unhoused populations and even those needing a space to come for job services or mentoring or whatever the case might be. I think this is a great opportunity for the city to show how engaged we are with everybody here from all walks of life. And so I appreciate you taking the time to do that, and I second what Jake's Journey Home can do for the city here. So, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I could go ahead and have Beth Crutau, followed by Mike Saletti and Jackie Saletti. You go ahead and approach the podium.
Thank you very much.
The small one, actually, should work. It should get close to it, yeah.
As a volunteer with Jake's Journey Home and working with our unhoused for years here in Folsom, I can say we need a place to meet with people. here in Folsom, I can say we need a place to meet with people, and a location that doesn't have to be sitting on the bench in Zoo Park, or I meet a lot of people in McDonald's and Starbucks, and it's just, it's difficult. And I love the idea of a location centralized away from a lot of the public, where we can meet our clients, provide them the services. And what we are doing is getting people off the streets. I personally have been involved with five or six who have been homeless and are now housed, and we can make a difference. But it takes individual relationships and working with people regularly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Saletti, followed by Jackie Saletti?
Good evening. You asked for less vitriol, which will cause me to wrangle my thoughts. So, your choice.
Nothing has been decided.
Just a couple seconds. A lot might take me extra. So I think you know that my wife and I both live and own a business in downtown historical District Folsom, right? I was here in October last year, and this all kind of started not just because I was tired of picking up trash and broken bottles and needles and washing feces off my front yard and off the salon building. That sucked. But the real problem was that my wife had been verbally threatened in the front yard, my mother-in-law verbally threatened in the front yard, my wife was physically attacked on the bridge, and one of our employees at the salon was violently attacked and had a bottle thrown at her. They ended up cutting her foot, and she was able to retreat back into the building and get away. And I told you guys then that it wasn't if, but only when someone was going to get seriously hurt. And just within the last few weeks, someone was nearly pickaxe to death, and a woman was violently assaulted on Sutter Street and hospitalized by a violent homeless person. Okay? So as far as putting this idea down in historical district, let me tell you what's gonna happen. The homeless people will leave the shelter and go down to Sutter Street and panhandle. Tourists will stop coming, just like San Francisco. Businesses will close, and revenue won't go up, it'll disappear. Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you said that having more revenue from people coming from outside the city was vitally important for us to have. You said that yourself. The criminally violent homeless will then take the money they begged and walked up to the liquor store, get drunk, then terrorize all the residents in historical Folsom like they're doing now, vandalize, steal their property, and/or assault any poor woman that is unfortunate enough to be left and caught alone. Other people are gonna tell you it's already happened to them. My mom is terrified to walk by herself. Then they're gonna go back to their shelter and start the process again the next day, except they realize they need something, so they walk down the street to the nearest store and simply steal whatever they want, driving dramatic increase in retail theft that's going on in our city, driving up prices, and getting ever more people to decide to avoid that altogether and buy online, and again, completely negates the need for revenue that we keep talking about that we have to have. Okay? So from there, I'm gonna go off script a little bit. Mr. Mayor, I was at a meeting one day when you said, I think I'm gonna quote you as close as I can, that an intelligent person can hold two different thoughts in their head at the same time. My question to all of you, and I think what's making all of us in here so angry, is why is it impossible for the city councils to differentiate the people that Jean is trying to help? By the way, you've got skin in the game. My mother-in-law is now in contact with Jean, doing what she can to help. Why is it impossible to differentiate those people from the violent criminals that are causing all of this chaos in our city? I don't understand. I don't think anybody else in here can understand either. Why we can't enhance the police force, even temporarily, bring the homeless unit back?
Mike, that's all, that's, that's time. I, your point, your point's a good one. I'm gonna respond. No, no, it's, 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 it's an absolutely fair question, and what I would suggest is I am literally holding both of those ideas in my head as we speak, and that's why I made all the peremptory comments that I made. This is trying to work on one aspect of the issue, which is the people that we can convert to housed. Some services there. The police department, still, we have the issue of crime that we need to deal with. It is separate from what is proposed here. And at no point did we suggest that this was a shelter where anybody would be staying for any length of time. It, it would at most be a service center for individual counseling to take place.
Mr. Mayor, where do they go when they're done? Not like they can drive home. They're homeless. Where do they go?
All right. We're not gonna have a dialogue. What I'm saying is that you're right to make that criticism, and we want to move on to Jackie.
By the way, this is, everybody wants, everybody wants a dialogue. Everybody has the same question. You can save two hours.
We're not going, okay, first, first of all, it is impossible for...
...representing the people of Folsom, not the homeless people.
It's Jackie's turn to talk.
You asked for...
I, I told you that it was gonna be three minutes exactly, okay?
Okay, the next speaker will be Jackie Saletti versus Gary Grice, and then Crystal Tobias and Amber Phelps.
My name's Jackie Saletti, and this is like a deja vu for me. Again, five, six months ago, talking about the homeless, not the ones Jean is helping, Powerhouse Ministries, Heart, Heart, not them. I'm, the only solutions I'm hearing is how to help the homeless. I want to help the people of our city who are getting harassed, affecting our businesses, our retail theft. Where is the talk about the police to protect us? We have none. Not only do we have none, we had the three taken away that were supposed to be directed towards helping us. I'm tired of it. Half of you guys have, are going out of the council and not even gonna be here. Do you have skin in this game? I lived here for 35 years. Why are you dragging your feet? We are in a city of emergency. Use the emergency funds that we have to hire more police to keep us all safe.
I think I was next. Gary Grice?
Gary Grice.
Yes. Gary Grice, I spoke to you guys two weeks ago. I'm a 30-year resident with my wife. She's blind. I'm 76. She's 70. She's been blind for about 30 years now. She's on her third guide dog for the blind. She's been verbally and psychotically accosted three times by two separate homeless men in Folsom. Last week, we were here, and your venerable police officers heard my testimony about the homeless encampment right across from Winco on Blue Ravine. They took action the next day. That was a Tuesday night. The next day, Wednesday, that homeless man with his pit bull that growled and lunged at my wife as she walked by, he was courteously asked to leave. It took him all day to leave, and so she walked on Thursday, her regular neighborhood walk where a blind woman can feel comfortable. She was not able to walk on Friday. We had business. Saturday, a new encampment was there with two brand-new people, with a humongous tent, lawn chairs. It, it just, it's come to the point where when we live in a neighborhood and pay the taxes, we're, we're not young people. I can't fight off, you know, mad dogs that, that attack my wife.
It's not your job.
No, I, I know it's not. It's just, I just want to, I want to compliment Sergeant Grunberg and Officer, I believe it's Everett. They're doing a bang-up job. But Jesus, they take a day off and the camp is back. And, and I took pictures. They, they've got a fire ring. They've been burning, burning firewood there, right behind people's houses on the other side of the wall across from Winco. And it's just, it's gotten out of control. So somebody's gotta do something. At least the two guys that, that verbally assaulted my wife, they both met 51-50 criteria. They could have been 51-50. They were not. We need to, we need to get some kind of action. If, if somebody's violent and aggressive, they need to be detained. If they're willing to get services and counseling, et cetera, they should get that.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Crystal Tobias, if you want to go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Amber Phelps and John Phelps.
Hi. I want to applaud the people who work for Jake's Journey Home and all the other homeless agencies, but they can only help the people that want to be helped. And I think we're all here talking about the rest of that population. My name is Crystal Tobias, and I've been a resident of Folsom since 1996. I'm co-founder of Friends of Lakes Folsom and Natoma, president of the Sacramento Area Creeks Council, and I'm a member of a group called the River City Waterway Alliance, which has removed almost a million and a half pounds of homeless trash from our county's rivers and streams since January 2023. I have worked with the city of Folsom for years on trash on our trails, and I'm the current steward for the rail trail mile between Bidwell and Blue Ravine, arguably the worst trail in Folsom. I already pick up two or three bags of trash every time I'm on the trail, which is two or three times a week. I am here tonight to urge the city to not put a homeless services trailer on the corner of Bidwell and Folsom. I live near that corner and walk on that part of the trail several times a week, picking up trash. I have been yelled at, followed, told to get the F away from me, called a fucky, excuse me, effing bitch by homeless individuals in that area. I have, there are often criminals hiding out in that population. There are already dozens of sex offenders living in the area. I have picked up dozens of needles and piles of human waste myself, because it's, I cannot call the city and have them come and get it. They simply do not have the resources. I've found pornography, litter and debris, broken glass bottles, food, abandoned shopping carts, items that were clearly stolen from stores and residents. For example, this week I found two landscaping tools in a bottle, a can of gasoline on the Willow Creek Trail. Last week I found a automobile gas tank that somebody hauled over there. I report them to Chris O'Keefe, and yesterday I simply took him to the police department and turned him in myself. I've had to report a homeless individual parking their wheelchair in the middle of the trail after they refused to acknowledge me when I told them it wasn't safe to do that. I had to report a homeless individual masturbating between the trail and the light rail tracks in plain sight of the trail. I never feel safe anymore in that area and carry pepper spray with me at all times, as well as a trash grabber, which is not really a weapon, but might slow somebody down. I do not like living this way and believe that if the support trailer is put in this location, things will go from bad to terrible. You will be inviting this population to make themselves at home in this area, which they are already doing, and wreaking havoc on a lovely trail. Women and children and senior citizens use this trail regularly, regularly, and if it is not safe for someone relatively young and agile, it is certainly not safe for someone who is vulnerable. This trailer should be put near other homeless services in Folsom, not along a park trail. This population is its own worst enemy, and frankly, none of our local governments or nonprofits in that arena seem to be able to address the growing problems of lack of housing or safe ground, drug use, mental illness, and theft. I think y'all get the picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Phelps, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by John Phelps and Darla Smith.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amber Phelps. I'm a longtime resident and business owner here in historic Folsom, as well as an FHDA board member. I'm here to speak about the proposal, obviously. I just want to say thank you, Mayor Kozlowski, for explaining a little bit more about your thought process behind this idea, because we really didn't have that information. So I do appreciate it, and I think in theory, it sounds like it could be very helpful to our unhoused. My own father was homeless. He was a Vietnam vet. He died sitting on a park bench after a three-week bender that was too much for his liver to handle. This was after he left the free rehab that he'd been, been in for four months. So I'm not unsympathetic to the situation or the unhoused, especially those that want to change their situation and want help. But not long ago, I stood in this room listening to a variety of nonprofit groups showcase all that they do for the unhoused community in our area, and it, it really is amazing. It was great to see that and hear that. It was clear that there's a lot of resources available to those that want them, and it was nice to hear some of those success stories. At that time, the impression was that these groups were doing such a great job that we didn't need to give more resources to our Folsom Police Department. So I was a bit confused about how we went from there to here so quickly. Again, we didn't have a lot of the information. Regarding that land, as you said, it's at the entrance to historic Folsom. Many call historic Folsom the crown jewel of Folsom. That property isn't very pretty right now, admittedly. We would love to see it be something beautiful. It's been talked about being a railroad museum. There's a historic site there. The PSVRR has been there, which now I understand they're going to be moving to south of 50. Okay, I wasn't sure where that landed back in January, so. By no means am I saying this shouldn't be in my backyard. I don't think it should be in anybody's backyard, and I know that might be a fairy tale idea because we're here in reality, but if the proposal were viable, affordable, well-managed, located in a non-residential, nonhistoric area, I could be convinced that it's a good idea, that it could work, that services could be brought. We don't know how it'll be funded. We don't know how it'll be managed. Our city is facing a deficit. Services to tax-paying citizens are being cut. Resources are being pulled to south of 50. So I am here with the, with a solution. It was in the FHDA letter, a mobile unit. I think a mobile unit, another mobile unit to help Jake's Journey Home or the other nonprofits solves a lot of the issue, at least temporarily. It's not in one spot. It would not bring people in to congregate in one area. It would serve more of the community. Not everybody can get down to historic Folsom unless they're coming up on the light rail or the bike trail. People on the other side of Folsom might not be able to get over there. So I would implore you to look more into sources for a mobile unit.
Thank you for that suggestion. That's your time.
And as our district representative, I appreciate you looking out for your citizens and constituents. Please keep doing that.
Okay, John Phelps, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Darla Smith and Leonardo Martinez.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. There's a joke in there somewhere that I'm not gonna touch. My name is John Phelps. I am a local resident, also a business owner. I'm a historic district commissioner, but most of y'all know me for walking a pig up and down Sutter Street. So, that's my claim to fame. But like Chandler and friends, nobody knows what I really do. Nobody does. Very few people do. I don't think my wife does either. But what I do is sales, high-tech sales, and I go to conferences a lot. I go, I go to Vegas a lot. I go to a lot of cities, a lot of cities that I don't even want to go to. But I go there because there's customers there, and they all congregate in one place. And so it's easy for me to have giveaways. It's easy for me to, to find people to talk to. It's easy for me to make sales. Giving a place for unhoused people to congregate brings them all into one spot. There are other salespeople out there. They're called drug dealers. They know exactly what they're doing. They target homeless shelters, homeless centers, and methadone clinics, because it's easier to find your customers there. So as my wife said, mobile unit, I like that idea. I appreciate everything that Jake's Journey Home and everyone else is doing, but having one place to bring people together where they're an easy target, and I am not accusing the unhoused of being drug addicts, but it's sure an easy place for them to become drug addicts, or to be offered drugs. First hit is free. And it's an easy place for drug dealers to find potential customers. And I don't want to see that happen, because those drugs, especially with what's floating around right now, are gonna end up in our junior high and our high school, and that's gonna kill kids. And I can't have that. So thank you.
Okay, Darla Smith, go ahead and approach the podium, please.
I need glasses. Thank you, councilmembers, for the time to speak. My name is Darla Smith, and I am the general manager of the Folsom Village Mobile Home Park located at 701 Oakdale Street. That is just adjacent to the historical railroad, railroad center.
You can see the bottom corner of it on the photograph at the top of the page.
Yeah, it's at the top corner. We are against this proposed homeless services site at that location. Obviously, the proximity to the historic downtown, the high-density housing, and especially our 63 households adjacent to that property. We're not opposed to the services. We support that, and we need it, and I've learned more about the different organizations today that are serving the people that need and want the help. I've learned today also, we have a large population that know that they can get away with the criminal activity, because they don't have pressure to make better choices, to move along, to not be on our streets, and not intimidate or attack, as we're probably gonna hear from some other people here in Folsom. going to hear from some other people here in Folsom. Homelessness is not new. Other cities are addressing the issue of homelessness by providing the support services. They do not bring the homeless into these residential areas or the crown jewel of their town. We're the historic district. If you do this and bring more homeless people in to provide them services, whether they are on the list of wanting these services or not, there is going to be increased issues related to bringing those people in. You asked earlier, Mr. Mayor, what are some of the solutions? If we look to the other cities, the San Joses, the San Franciscos, the Reno, Nevada, that many cities are looking at, that have a watershed, okay? We need to get the needles and the human waste out of the water or near the water. We need to clear up our pathways so that the people that want to come here and do the 5K runs and the Easter egg hunt that's coming up, that they have a safe place to do these activities, and they want to come to Folsom. They want to come to the rodeo. They want to feel safe afterwards, walking out to their cars. And right now, people are not feeling safe, and that's a shame, and that falls on you. So, thank you.
Okay, Leonardo Martinez, go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Deborah Grassel, Diana Lazadaire, and Chuck Lazadaire.
Hello, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. If you could come just a little closer to the microphone.
So my name is Leo Martinez. I actually debated coming here tonight. You know, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I used to be the director and program manager for homeless services at both services in Alameda County, coordinated entry. I did a lot of boots-in-the-ground social work. I've been in the trenches, trying to help out as best as I could. I'm also a brand-new business owner on Sutter Street. We opened on June 8th. We haven't even opened our doors yet. The other day, there was somebody across the street who was having a mental health crisis, and I called 911 because I knew what was happening. About 20 minutes later, after that phone call, I approached the area, and a young black woman got attacked. I tackled the gentleman and stopped the guy from killing her. I say that here not to, I'm not trying to impress anyone. I think anybody would have done the same thing. But the truth of the matter is, is that I have been in areas where I've seen things that do work and that don't work. And one of the things that I know for a fact is that homeless populations have vulnerable populations within them. And when we start to build static locations, the strongest ones, the fastest ones, the ones that can get to that front door quickest are the ones that will get there. And usually, the most vulnerable populations are the ones that don't get the services that they need, the disabled, the ill, those with severe, severe mental illnesses. They can't get to those doors. They can't get there. And I, the services that are being offered to the community by these wonderful agencies are amazing. They do the best work. Some of the best people I've ever worked with have been these individuals. But the truth of the matter is, is that we need to assess these individuals for the need and try to make sure that we can give services for the need that's there, not just have a place where invite people to bring them to a central location, because once the denial of services happens, when there's nothing there, they are there. Somebody said, they come there, where are they going to go next? They start to encamp themselves around that area, and it starts to build up and build up and build up. One of the hardest things about providing our services was being able to locate people because they were so transient. They were constantly moving. I think one of the solutions that was brought up was a mobile solution, which I completely support. I think having the ability to invest a quarter million dollars into these types of services, these types of agencies, so that we can provide these types of services to those that are truly in need, to find them where they're at in the communities. Half of the people that we used to service were in places you would never imagine. They were scared. They were looking for help and couldn't get it. They didn't know how to get it, and so we had to go out to them. So taking something from the places like Alameda County and San Francisco that I've seen, my hometown, San Francisco Mission District, it's no longer the same place I was at, because these services, these great minds trying to solve the problem couldn't figure it out. What we know doesn't work is putting these things that draw and draw and make the problem worse and worse.
Can I stop you right there? You have seven seconds. Will you please plug your business, because the curiosity is killing me? If you're going to open on June 8th, invite all these people there.
Thank you, sir. The business name is Mind Garden. We're a wellness collective, my wife and I. It's our dream, and we started it. We are all mental health clinicians, and we'll be offering acupuncture, massage, and wellness services, and any kind of help through common day problems. We're there to be supportive, and Mo Galshani has rented a space to us. It's that beautiful corner spot on 929 Sutter Street. We're building it out. Thank you for letting me say that.
And listen, thank you for having a positive way of approaching this problem with good advice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Deborah Grassel, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, please. Deborah Grassel, yes.
Good evening, council. I'm Deborah Grassel. I'm here today in the capacity of Friends of Folsom Preservation, and first of all, I want to thank Mayor Kozlowski for owning it, for coming forward and telling us what your original thoughts were. I appreciate that very much, because it really did alarm your district, as I'm sure you know already. I have a couple of positive things maybe to add in regard to how we might work through this problem. First of all, the Powerhouse Ministries sees the homeless every month, at least 300 visits and more from homeless. They service them, you know, 365 days of the year, and they have never received any kind of subsidy from the city. They could sure use it. They mentioned that should I have an opportunity to speak, that maybe I could pass that on, that they do need help. They would like to provide even more services for the homeless, but they provide a lot of them. Second of all, it seems to me that the city now needs to have an active grant subsidy from many different, many different sources, and there are a lot of them out there right now. So we may not have money, but we've got staff. We've got staff that know how to write grants for trails and bridges and, you know, all kinds of wonderful things. And right now, there's money from the state of California for homeless subsidies. So I think that that should really be investigated. And then, the second thing I might add is that your constituents, Mayor Kozlowski and District 1, would really appreciate a heads-up if there's something that you feel that we could contribute to this process, because we are all affected here dramatically by the homeless, and we've all got a lot of thoughts, and some of them can be acted on right away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Diana Lazadaire, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Chuck Lazadaire and Miss C. Engel.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Diana Lazadaire. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Get a little closer. I'm a resident owner in historic Folsom, and we've moved here 12 years ago from the Parkway. And the reason why we moved here is because we love the charm of historic Folsom, you know? You've got the bike trails, you've got the, you know, Sutter Street. We love it. So for the four, the last four years, we've experienced a lot of homeless in our area, and, you know, people appear to be on drugs, and we do see, you know, that happening. Many people are roaming our neighborhood. We're seeing a lot of crime in where we live, right where we live. People leave like their shopping carts right on our corner, their clothing. One day, I'm not exaggerating, you guys, I went out there to clean up. I saw this big bag of clothing and a shopping cart, and there was a big pile, about this big, of human feces, and I didn't know what it was at first. And my husband had to go clean it up. I'm like, I'm not cleaning this up. So anyway, wanted to share that with you. Just last week, I was with my neighbor, and we were walking on the bike trail on Folsom Boulevard in Vice Sibley, and there was this homeless person who was hallucinating on drugs, really, really bad. And he was scaring us. He was yelling and screaming at us, and we can see he was smoking a pipe, and we had people telling us this, too. We were walking that way, and we were afraid for our lives. We really were. And she had a newborn baby with her, you know? So we called the police. Police did nothing. They didn't come. They said they couldn't do anything. So that's a problem. So I just feel that, you know, I understand we need to have some services for the homeless people, but not in this residential neighborhood. You know, this is the jewel of Folsom. It's beautiful here. We all love it. Everybody here loves historic Folsom. So I'm asking you, please, not to put these services here. Find a new location. I do like the idea of a mobile and bringing it to different, you know, locations that might need that services. And then also, I kind of thought of this just a few minutes ago, what about south of 50, you know, over on that side? Why not over there? And we can have transit to bring them over there. Have a bus and transport them over there.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's.
I'll write that down.
Okay. And then another thing that I thought of, you were talking about if we had it on city property, that that would be better. Well, what if, you know, if we have it on city property, and then all of a sudden they start camping out with their tents, and the city can't move them because they're on city property? If they're on private property, you can make a move, but not on city property or county. So that's something to think about. You know, if we have these mobile, that mobile unit there, and all of a sudden they start camping out, you know, how are you going to get rid of them? So something to think about.
Good question. Thank you.
Yeah. And anyway, another thing I wanted to say real briefly.
Got two seconds.
Okay, okay. So Folsom was voted a while ago one of the safest cities in California to live. I would like to see that again, okay? Thank you.
Okay, Chuck Lazadaire.
I'm good. I'll act as if I'm hearing everybody else's stuff or anything that I need to bump up.
Thank you.
And Miss C. Engel, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Lindsey Minor.
Thanks for doing cleanup duty also.
And Dustin Silva.
Hi, guys. I am no professional speaker. I'm a resident at the top of that picture right there, inside the Mobile Home Park facing out on Auburn-Folsom. My biggest thing, I thank you for explaining what you did, but even though you're not putting a doorbell or a sign out there, word of mouth is word of mouth, and once homeless do start coming into there, there's studies everywhere, Department of HUD, Arizona State did one. Homeless encampments are where there are resources, and like our new business owner was saying, if it's stagnant, if it's sitting in one spot, they're more apt to, when they leave an appointment, whatever they've done there for the day, stay close. Where's that tent going to go? On Oakdale, that's already just one car width in the first place? I don't know if you've ever, if you ever drive on it, but I've lived on it for five years now. Two cars can't even pass each other on Oakdale. So if you start getting all sorts of homeless encampments and things like that there, it's a problem. And we've already had homeless down the bottom of Forest Street in the last few months. So that's, I live there. I know you don't want to hear different location, but there's a 48-unit apartment complex there with little kids and young couples that are walking through there constantly. And then you've got R60-plus units that are in that RV park that are sitting right on top of that. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if Lindsey Minor could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Dustin Silva and Paul Keast.
My name's Lindsey Minor. I'm a resident of Old Folsom. Closer, sorry. I'd like to preface what I'm about to say by sharing my experience in working across Sacramento County throughout the years. I work in home repair, so I frame my reference as relevant to property damage and the quality of life implications that come with the uptick of homeless population. In areas where there are high concentration of homeless, based on proximity to community resource centers, some of the primary tasks were installing security bars on windows and repairing property damage from vandalization. Over the past decade, I've seen firsthand effects of homeless assistance centers in neighborhoods. The residents of downtown Sacramento who are living in fear of their own communities, they have been imprisoned in their own homes, unable to leave, for fear of a violent confrontation. In the instance that they do leave their homes, the best outcome is that they are met with disorder, trash, and even fecal matter, which presents a public health risk. As a mother of a five-month-old baby, I've had to encounter these aggressive homeless people on our walking trail. Bringing more of them will make me and my neighbors no longer feel safe to walk alone in our neighborhood, not to mention the burden it will put on local shop owners on Sutter Street. People will want to potentially avoid Sutter Street as it will feel unsafe. I know the purpose of this is to do good for those who genuinely want help to get back on their feet. However, I believe this will do more harm to the neighborhood of Old Folsom and businesses of historic. If a help center is inevitable, I ask if you will please consider an area away from the neighborhood, away from the neighborhood for the safety of Folsom citizens. And I know I do have a little bit of extra time. Am I allowed to ask questions?
You can try.
Okay. So I know that we're raising a tax for Folsom, because we don't have funds, and I see that you guys are spending $225,000 as a starting fund just to put this in. Where does that money come from?
So you may have missed part of my preemptory comments.
I did.
We don't have any money to implement the plan that was shown here at all, and we probably won't have funds in next year's budget either. The only time that we would reconsider this is once funds are available and once the council feels like there's a service offering that we are comfortable putting out there in the world.
Okay.
And so we're not planning to spend any money right now. This was a expedition to figure out what it might cost. That's it.
And when we do have those funds, where is it on that priority list?
It's somewhere after more police officers.
Got it. Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Just Dustin Silva.
Excellent use of a question.
Followed by Paul Keast and Joseph Nicolai.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Dustin Silva. I'm a Folsom resident. I'm also a captain with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. I've been with.
Dustin, can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, I'm too tall for this thing.
He's a little too tall for that one, yeah. Just if you project it, it'll pick it up.
All right, I'll start again.
A outside voice.
I'm a captain with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. I've been with them for about 25 years. For the last three, in some capacity, I've oversaw our homeless outreach team. So I'm just kind of here to share some of the things that we've found successful. First off, everywhere I've seen that's had a successful homeless initiative, it always has started with the law enforcement. You have to have law enforcement backing. You have to have the law enforcement bodies there. And it was mentioned earlier by somebody else, is this, the homeless community is a community, right? So we have officers assigned to different communities throughout Folsom. Ideally, we could have them assigned just to the homeless community. They have their own issues, their own problems. You have bad actors within that group that are, that will prey on other members of the homeless community. One of the things that we do really well, I think, is we keep stats. We survey every, every person that we contact out in the field. The rate of sexual assault, domestic violence, you name it, assault with deadly weapons within this community is just off the charts compared to outside of the homeless community. Law enforcement is able to confront those problems and hold those accountable for preying on other homeless people and members of community. Second, what needs to happen is there has to be that groundwork laid, right? So we have to have, you have to identify the nonprofits that you're going to work with, critical infrastructure, waste removal. I think we moved, removed something like 2 million tons of waste from these different camps, or different camps throughout the county. I mean, it's amazing what this, what our hot team has been able to do. I think we, I mean, it's very doable here within the county. It's just we have to empower the police department to do that with the bodies. We have a great police department. They have excellent management and leadership, and I know they want to do it, but it has to start with, any strategy with homeless has to start with law enforcement. So I appreciate, I appreciate this being on the agenda so we can talk about it. I think it's a great discussion, and thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker, Paul Keast, followed by Joseph Nicolai and Jim Harvell.
Hello, I'm Paul Keast. I live on the 800 block. I live on the 800 block of Mormon Street in the historic district. And over the, since I left my original job in 2013, I've worked about six years in a couple of different areas of homeless support, people coming out of prison and in Folsom, people on the streets, helping them to get back, you know, in a, in a better way of life. So I have a little bit of experience that I can talk with. One is that you asked about what are some things that we can do? First of all, the city has to change your tone on what you say about the homelessness and what the city can do. You used the term handcuff. The city is not handcuffed if it doesn't want to be. So there is, there is this appellate court decision that creates some limitations or some options or a playing field that has to be used. We have a city attorney. I believe we have at least one other attorney that works for the city. And I think those people can be asked to focus on what are options that the city can use to be able to operate in, to be able to either control or work with or fund this problem that we're having. Second thing is, you have to talk about, you have to really look at this as a service problem. You have to, when you sent out this thing that talked about a facilities problem, it's not a facilities problem, it's a service problem. And the city has a unique role that the nonprofits can't do, and nonprofits probably have roles that the city can't do, so you have to come together. And you have to realize that that's something that you have to work together and you have to want to do it. Another thing is, you have to effectively communicate. This was a, I'm sorry to say, this was a terrible way to communicate this idea. And, you know, this is why people are angry. It's okay to have people frustrated, but we don't want them angry, I don't think. Stop saying there's no money. That's another tone thing. There is money. My understanding, based on the fund that exists, is there's $17 to $20 million that potentially can be used for an emergency. So let's define this as, as an emergency or some part of it. And the last thing is, stop mixing homeless with other things. You, you talked about this beautification process that you wanted to do with that Y property, and then maybe we can help some homeless too. Don't do that. Homeless is a unique and a significant issue. Deal with that unique, significant issue by itself. And again, go back to it's services before facilities. You got to have services. And then let the facilities fit in under the services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Joseph Nicolai, followed by Jim Harville and Bruce Klein.
Hi, my name's Joseph Nicolai. I've lived in California my whole life, and I'm a Folsom resident for 20 years plus. It saddens me to think how much Folsom's changed. Not in a good way. It has changed in good ways, but the homelessness has got really, really, in my estimation, and I think many people here's estimation, out of control. It seems like our state officials and our local officials want to represent homeless people more than they want to represent the citizens that pay taxes here in Folsom. The problem's getting worse, it's not getting better. State of California spends more money on trying to address homelessness than any other state in our union. What have we got out of that? I can tell you, and you all know. None of you are stupid. I hope not. We've got more homelessness. When you feed a stray cat, you get more stray cats. Sorry to say it that way, but let's just speak plain. I also grew up like the, I don't know where he is, the guy that was in the Mission District in San Francisco. Great city. And, and you know what? There are nice areas of it. But overall, I don't want to go there. I don't want to spend my money there. I'm retired. I can kind of do what I want. I don't want to go there. I don't want to go where there's going to be problems, any potential problems. How you think people are going to come to our city and spend their money? Go run on our trails, go walk on our trails, go see our beautiful bikeways? There's homeless camps all over? This is your guys' fault. This is your fault. You need to address it. Just like the prior speaker said, you have the ability to do things. You are more interested in representing the wrong people. One last thing I want to say. I negotiated pretty much my entire life. And I can read people pretty well. Their body language, their faces, their gestures. There's two people up on this panel that I can see, YK being one of them, that's actually interested in trying to help things, trying to address things. There's other people here that I don't think are as concerned about that. I think they're concerned about bureaucracy and stuff that doesn't get us and move us forward. I want to move forward. There's a lot of good ideas, and I think all the homeless organizations, they're great and they serve a purpose. But there is one way we can solve this. Don't let people camp in our parks, our bikeways. And guess what? If they can't live here, they're not going to be here. It's very simple. Let's not make it a complicated process. You're looking at the clock as you want me to go away.
I'm trying, I'm trying to indicate to you that your time is up.
Say it again.
I'm trying to indicate to you that your time is up, that's all.
Yeah. Probably good for you.
So listen, I've been accused this way over and over and over again of doing nothing. That's why I was trying to do something, right? And I can't, I can't...
But this is all, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm not having a dialogue with you. Your time is up.
Oh, you're not? I thought this was an open dialogue. I thought you said at the beginning of the process here, this is an open dialogue. I'm happy to hear that we have an open dialogue. So we don't have an open dialogue, just to be clear.
Not you and me, not right now.
Not me and you.
I'm happy to talk with you any other time.
Okay. Well, when, can I make an appointment right now in your office? And I'll be happy to come talk with you.
Great.
When would you like me to come?
Monday at 8:00 AM.
How about tomorrow at 8:00 AM?
I'm going to be in Spokane, Washington, doing my regular job.
Oh, okay. Well, Monday, at your regular job? Okay.
I don't have the luxury of working on one issue exclusively. We have many facets to all kinds of responsibilities here.
This is a very serious issue that needs to be addressed. Obviously, you see, there's a lot of community participation.
We're trying to address it. Thank you.
Seems like you're trying to make excuses.
We're trying to address it. Thank you.
This is all very foreseeable. Everything that you're wanting to do...
Thank you, sir.
To make more problems and create more problems.
Your time is up. Please leave the podium.
No problem. YK? You got my vote next time. I like you. I like the way you think, and I like the way you want results. We need to have results-driven policies.
Jim Harville, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Bruce Klein and Tanya Morales.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jim Harville, President, Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad. Let's bring some good news to the table. Couple of years ago, we partnered with Fish and Wildlife, who owns the property to the south of the rails between Glen and Sibley, to provide the logistic support so that they could remove the homeless camps in that area at the time. I was just, got a phone call from our contact last week. They want to set up another team to come in and do that. I want to thank Mayor Kozlowski last year for reaching out to me very early in this conceptual idea to discuss what I thought might be the impacts, what are the possibilities, how it might integrate with the larger needs of the community. So thank you very much. I know you're taking a beating tonight. Epsom salt bath and a double scotch is my recommendation.
I asked you all for this job. It's okay.
So, you know, real quick, you know, again, I, I actually came in tonight to address maybe some potential issues on this, but I, I think we don't need to go there. I am very impressed with the concepts by the professionals in the audience, talking about mobile services and how that's the way to target this issue. Several years back, went to a, a coffee with, with Carrie Howell, where she had one of the local homeless experts weigh in. And that person shared that most of the people are from this area. They're struggling, they're troubled, but they are part of this community. So, you know, we have our, we have our concerns, we have our misgivings. Again, our ultimate aim is to have a railroad-themed public park in that site with some boutique, non-industrial-looking restoration facilities, things like that. But, you know, if the, the parking area, which would be in that lower southwest corner, would have room for an admin building and parking for some mobile service trucks, keep it administrative, you know, don't, don't let it be a magnet. And again, thank you for reaching out early, and thank you for taking the heat, for trying to bring this concept more into the public dialogue. And congratulations, Rosario.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? For the members of the public, can you please clarify the limitations that we have up here during Business From the Floor? And there's been a couple of requests to engage in a conversation?
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. This is not a Business From the Floor item. This is agenda as...
Okay, all right.
As new business. But it is true that most time, the council receives public comment without having a dialogue and then deliberate after the public...
Thank you.
Yeah, have the chance to speak.
Thank you. Okay, Bruce Klein, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having all of us here. There's a lot of good that can come out of what we're hearing tonight. I'm a 34-year resident. I'm the chair of the Citizens Sales Tax Initiative, trying to drive revenue to our city to hire additional police officers, which we definitely need in this community. I appreciate the number of speakers who have spoken tonight and acknowledge the lack of revenue that we have in our city. Also, the representative on the River District Citizens Advisory Committee. And we've talked about this Y property as a crucial piece to the city. I've talked to thousands and thousands of people in the last couple, three, four months while we're collecting signatures to qualify this measure for the ballot. And I'm telling you, the number two, number one comment that we hear from everyone is that they are very, very mad, they're very angry about this, I'll call it the unlawful homeless side of things. They're very concerned about violent, violent incidents that have occurred in our community. They're concerned about the increase of camping, their increased camping within our parks. I've reported park problems at Limbee a number of times. They're concerned that the city is not acting. And so I think this gives a catalyst to the city to be creative and act. We've had presentations in the past months, and most folks feel that nothing has come of those, and something has to come of those. Our quality of life is very much affected by the homeless, illegal homeless population. When I say illegal, I'm talking about the criminal element of that population. I'm very concerned about fire danger. We're on the verge of the fire season coming up. And we know there are camps throughout this community, and we do not need a Santa Rosa. Let me just tell you a little story about my background. I started as the, with the city attorney's office in the city of Sacramento and endured the worst case that I ever had in my legal career, and that was dealing with loaves and fishes. Started with a nice, small site. They expanded their services, people came and it blew up. I sued loaves and fishes. Not a good move. It was the worst. But the bottom line is, we've seen what's happened as a result of that type of facility when you build those things. So I think a number of these folks that sent letters in have some really good ideas. Love the ideas that Jim Snook put on the table. Mike Reynolds also had some good ideas. Let's use this thing to carry it forward, and let's just make a commitment that we say, we're just not going to say, well, we'll put it off to another agenda. Set up something where you utilize all these great professionals who are here tonight and say, we will not sleep until we have a plan in place, and we've got to solve it for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, Tanya Morales, and then followed by Alexandra Zaplin and Eric Lucero and Jennifer Lane.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski and council members. Thank you for having us tonight. I really do appreciate the issue that we're dealing with. Homelessness is very complicated, and if this is the only site that came up for offering services, I really don't think we should offer it. It is going to bring in a lot of camps. We're already seeing issues throughout the city, as everyone has mentioned tonight, and the crime and incidences that are, that are happening. And it seems to be that the only possible solution that was offered was that the mobile units, is to go where they're at, to go instead of drawing people into one area. It is really going to devastate our historic district. The, we, our priority needs to be to our residents, to our business owners there, who have invested, you know, their livelihood into, into starting a business. And we need to preserve our quality of life. We, I, 24 years ago, when we came to Folsom, that was what drew us here, the bikes, the trails, the quality of life that this was going to offer for, to our family and to our kids. And our kids are also, you know, they're starting to think of, of staying here and raising their families here. So I just really think that we're on that verge now. We are really hanging by a thread. Our quality of life is almost nonexistent here anymore. With what is happening with people that are afraid to go out at night, you know, I feel for the stories that I'm hearing. So I just wanted to say, this is definitely not a good solution to have it, to have this offered, to have services offered where people can gather and camp, and it's just, I, I just don't see how that's going to provide any safety in the city, and it's just going to, the encampments are going to continue to grow. Thank you.
Okay, Alexandra Zaplin, go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Eric Lucero and Jennifer Lane.
As you have heard, sorry, Alexandra Zaplin, about 10 years resident. As you have already heard, two weeks ago, Natomas Station area was basically under siege. And at, at the time, residents of the area were denied the use of sidewalks, of parks, and of the trails nearby. So that dog that was mentioned, at least two of my neighbors called about it, including 911. So now, encampments were popping up on the main street, right in front of Winco, and then one was sitting for everyone to see on the Folsom Boulevard. So at the time, I thought, well, I need to come here and stress, I think this is an emergency. Something unusual needs to be done. And then I had a gut punch because I found out, oh, it turns out, we will not be discussing more law enforcement, we will be discussing providing services. So that was a disconnect. Moving forward, I think it would give a lot more credibility to the initiative for sales tax if we see meaningful, visible action that could be achieved. We've heard that the city cut all benefits and pensions and so on. This is not something that's visible to people. I think if there was a way to, if, if there was a way to cancel recycling programs that nobody benefits and could save money on that, I understand there is a law and so on, but I think every rock need, need to be turned over and looked under. Because that would be a visible action, and it would show that, okay, we really are saving money in order to move it to law enforcement, and we are cutting the programs that I think are designed to bankrupt us and take money from law enforcement and to, you know, achieve somebody's social agenda and so on. So the, like I said, the first thing is, any help that could come to the Natomas Station area would be appreciated. And moving forward, please find a way to make meaningful action that would save money from the programs that I know we have to have, but they're not helping our safety, they're not helping any, you know, everyday life of the citizens who pay taxes here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Lucero, followed by Jennifer Lane.
Hi, guys. I, I own a ripping company, construction company, for over 20 years here in Folsom. Resident over 20 years or two. And I was asked to come and speak to you by a couple of our clients that we have. And one of the things that we're missing here is the damage that the homeless are causing to the buildings. For example, they're talking about the encampments behind Winco. My company has already fixed three roofs over there, along with some on Sutter Street, that these, that the homeless people are actually... that these, that the homeless people are actually climbing up on the roofs, breaking tile, stripping copper off the air conditioning units, and we get the phone calls to actually have to go out there. So that's one of the things we haven't talked about here tonight, is the damage that they're creating. Two of my customers are from the Bay Area here, and they just wanted to explain or try to, and make you understand that their deductibles are $5,000 to $10,000 just for their insurance companies. We can fix it for less than that the majority of the time, but it continues to keep happening. So embracing the homelessness back here, there was one gentleman that said, if you continue to keep bringing them in, they're, you know, they're not going to go away. It's like feeding cats or wild animals. We're in a business here to fix roofs, to put roofs on, to do siding, do windows. But it gets redundant to have to continue to keep going over to your house, Mike, or Rosario's, or whoever's house here, time after time, or if you own a commercial building like the ones that we're working on. So bringing them back, you know, I've been to the encampments before. I don't know, have any of you seen one before? Have you been there? I had the opportunity.
We've all cleaned them.
I had the opportunity to go with Vision Game, Folsom PD, and the code enforcement. And it was disgusting just to see what they do. In fact, one of the people that were in the homeless encampment fell off of one of the roofs at our job site and broke his leg. They're not going to go away. I've seen them fight, I've seen them attack people with their dogs from the roofs out there by Winco before. And, you know, for me to have to see that, I've been here for 20 years, I raised my kids here, I see everything enforcement. I think it's just a really bad idea to embrace the homeless people here. We got to do something different. But what I'm here to explain to you is the part that nobody's talking about. It's the money that you guys have to come out of your pocket to hire our companies to go out to fix your problems that are caused by the homeless people. So we have to figure out a way to balance that out. It's not fair for these people that own the buildings here in Folsom. And another guy said the same thing, nobody's going to want to keep coming. You know, if we can't keep our businesses open because we can't pay our bills.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Okay, Jennifer Lane, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, please. Okay, Colleen Shannon, followed by David Loyah and Bill Rominelli. Colleen, if you could go ahead and come up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, which we haven't said in quite a while. I'm Colleen Shannon. I'm a resident and business owner of Folsom. Mike, I really appreciate the time that you took to explain your idea. I think that's why we have public forum and to get these ideas out in the open. I think it's, I'm going to get booed here in a minute. I think it's a great idea to provide a place that the city has some control over, to provide help, like to get our, I had all these ideas written down, and then you talked, and I was like, wait, this is all out the window.
I'm available at 8:30 on Monday.
On 8:30? Might be in the hospital, Mike. I think it's a good idea to provide a space where our organizations can, can help the people who need help. I love the idea of a mobile unit. I know that those are expensive, too. If Jean wanted to put together a mobile unit, we could help you with that, Jean. But I also think that we need to address kind of some of the smaller issues that the city is facing, like the broken window idea, right? You let one broken window, you'll get more and more broken windows. And I think the shopping carts are a really big issue. And so I wanted to present an idea that we should partner with our high school football teams to go do some CrossFit and return shopping carts. My husband and my kids do it. We use our, we use our personal vehicles to pick up shopping carts and to return them. We see a lot from Walmart. We've tried reaching out to them before. We've been told to just call the store manager, which is kind of frustrating. But anyway, I think, I think that might be a solution to kind of getting the, the broken window idea out. And all the rest of what I wrote down, you've already heard a bajillion times from a lot of other people. So thank you for your time.
All right. I'll help you shag carts.
Okay, David Loyah, followed by Bill Rominelli and Doug Scalzi.
Good evening. My name is David Loyah, and I'm the Chief Strategic Officer of The Gathering Inn. Mayor, may I say, I've been doing this for 23 years, and that was one of the best attempts to defuse a bomb I have ever seen. Congratulations. The Gathering Inn, we recognize the inherent value of every individual. By providing an effective, efficient, and responsive array of services, we've reduced, we reduce the impact of homelessness within communities. We accomplish this by providing navigation centers, permanent supportive housing, and medical respite facilities. A few of our contributing and collaborative achievements have been reducing homelessness in Placer County, resulting in them having the lowest rate of homelessness in Northern California, and one of the lowest rates in all of California. Six, five months ago, we were contracted by the City of Elk Grove to provide a winter-only shelter. It was for fi, it was for five months, they expended another month until they find another location for us. By month four, according to the sergeant of their homeless outreach team, we had reduced street-level homelessness by 88%. We've also received a $6.2 million grant by, from the State of California to expand our medical respite care program from 10 beds to 60 beds. This is in collaboration with Sutter Hospital and Kaiser Hospital, as it saves them millions of dollars a year. Perhaps what we're most proud about is that we reach out to the local communities through our impact reports and our quarterly meetings. Last year, we've had $2.1 million in in-kind donations, hosted meals, and volunteer hours. That is how we provide services at a lower cost. Your comment on solutions, Henry Ford once said, "Don't find fault, find a solution. Anybody can complain." In my 23 years, here's the best I have for you now. I understand you have no money. No money, no mission. But there is money out there, and it can be accessed. What I would recommend, as quick as I can, is hosting two to four community meetings where you can educate, gain knowledge, and understand the in-depth of this, of this issue, and hear potential solutions. I would not have more than two or four, otherwise you will have paralysis by analysis. I would also come to agree, what types of programs will this community accept? What is the best for this local community? And then where will this community choose to cite that or those programs? I would also recommend only a one-year pilot program, and I would recommend it on city land as Loews and Fishes. They can do whatever they want. I would also agree on, from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Call me.
Nine o'clock on Monday.
I don't charge.
Bill Rominelli, if you could go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Doug Scalzi and Jim Snook.
He must have taken off.
Okay. Okay, Doug Scalzi, if you could go ahead and approach podium, followed by Jim Snook. And then our last and final speaker will be Christine Canelo.
Good evening, Council and City Manager. Been up here quite a few times before. I'm glad to hear where things are going at this point in time. I've been a reserve for people that haven't, don't know me. I've been a reserve for Folsom PD for 29 years. I've been in this town all my life. I'm also partners with Ronnie Family Foundation for Bidwell Studios, where we converted the motel into 24 housing units next to FLB on Bidwell Street. One of the things that I want to tell people here that they don't realize is that we've never been full, okay? And I've screamed from the rooftops to get Folsom people in there off the streets. And the bureaucracy of all this is ridiculous. So not saying that's the city's fault, because it's not. But we did finally get somebody that sits at the library to do intake and talk to people about qualifying to go in there. And they're not getting the people from Folsom over there to come in. So most of the people that I'm housing over there, besides six people, are from Sacramento County. Okay? So when you provide services and you don't get the people from your own town, it's a little frustrating, okay? I'm glad that there are things that you guys are working on, but when I came in in October, I said that this is going to be a major problem. I said, don't, let's not be the tail wagging the dog on this. There's entities around us doing things. Our law enforcement at that time had two officers handling the homeless. Now they're on handling retail theft. We don't even have anybody handling the homeless situation anymore because we have no resources. The hot team that Sacramento County is talking about, all our agencies around us have them. We need it. This is an emergency situation. I said it in October, I said it two weeks ago. We need to look at this. It's an emergency situation. We need at least six officers on a hot team to start handling the situation, this homeless situation, and immediately. If we get a tax passed, that's going to be two years in the making. We don't have two years. So you say you don't have funds, but that, that needs to happen immediately. I can't even stress that enough. We're way past that, okay? Secondly, or third, or whatever, we, we have to focus on putting people together. There's so many great ideas out here. And I said that in October, too. Put a team together of people that are willing to sit down and come up with solutions. I'm one of them. I'm willing to do that. Jean, she's doing a great job. I praised her in October, and she's out there every day hitting the streets, her and her team, great people. And we talk a lot, and she's just, she's really into what she tries to do for this community. But we need to put people together that have great minds, that can come up with solutions and look at other opportunities out there and what works for different cities. Okay? We can do this, and we can start that now without any funding. But law enforcement is key to this because we've lost everybody, and now it's back to patrol. And there's too many calls going out there for patrol to be handling all this stuff. So I can't stress it enough.
Thanks.
Our next speaker will be Jim Snook, followed by Christine Canelo, and last and final speaker will be Mike Reynolds.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Well, thanks for being proactive on this issue. I know all of you have been pressured by this issue, and for solutions, that's a tall order, a solution. There's so many unanswered questions. How about a task force? You succeeded in engaging all these citizens that come here, and there's some pretty dynamic people here.
Oh, nobody can leave.
So anyways, I was, I edited a lot of this because I got rid of a bunch, but, you know, somebody else, the Gathering Place, mentioned like, you know, a few community meetings, but keep the numbers small, but a task force. There are some dynamic people here tonight. We support organizations like Jake's Journey Home and Powerhouse Ministries. They're amazing. I encourage all of us that are here to support them, you know, every little bit helps. They do an amazing job, and all of our help could really encourage more for them. Also, sign the petition that's going around to repeal Prop 47. That's a huge issue. It's, you know, decriminalizing so many things has been horrific to what's going on right now. So that's a huge one. And also support the Citizens Tax Initiative that's going around for Folsom, because that will get us more police. I mean, part of that is strategic to more police. People want safety, we need more police. The historic district has seen a steady increase in incidents since the completion of the RT rail line. There has absolutely been unintended consequences to the light rail, and habits are hard to break. They ride the bus in now that the light rail's not working. So regardless of what is done to address the issue, a detailed plan in advance will be critical. So closing, I would just like to thank, thank you for engaging all of us, and maybe this collaborative task force can be formed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Christine Canelo, and then followed by Mike Reynolds.
My name is Christine Canelo, and I'm only a three-year resident of Folsom.
Welcome.
Sort of like a City of Sacramento refugee. Anyway, my career was spent 10 years in probation and 25 years in mental health clinician. I worked a lot in the emergency room assessing those people with mental illness. My experience tells me that the most effective treatment venues are a mobile unit or a government building with law enforcement or security or a hospital. As other people have already said, that a temporary or smaller unit just breeds trouble. I volunteered with heart of Folsom for the last three winter shelters, and it was my understanding that the reason we stopped it this year at nine weeks, instead of going 12 weeks, is that there was a concern that when the other shelters closed, that the people would come to Folsom. So that's what surprised me about the proposed location of this facility, because it's right near the light rail. And I think it would bring a lot more people in. Lastly, I'm a resident of Diamond Glen off Sibley, and my primary concern there is fire. The people are elderly, and it's a gated community, and I'm worried about fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mike Reynolds, our final speaker.
Mayor, Council, I'll be brief, since I am the last. In listening to a lot of the comments, I'll just, I wanted to get it publicly on the record, something I'd sent in several emails, but you hear the focus on, hey, let's be mobile. And, you know, one sort of low-fidelity idea would be the modification of the C Click Fix. And I was bending Jean's ear, and I was like, would that help? And so if you could use the community to crowdsource locations, which that app would allow us to do, so you could heat map, where is our problem? And I think a gentleman referenced, you know, the camp goes down, five days later it springs back up. I mean, there's just no way you have the officers or the people to track that stuff. So let's let the community help and engage. Number two, this is, to me, another sort of data point that gives, hopefully, you guys support of, advocate for the general half-cent sales tax. And I know that the Council's reluctant to a one. We've heard this. We had the Citizens Advisory Committee, as it came up and reported two weeks ago. There's tons of stuff that the city needs capital and long-range planning funds for. And to me, that's evidence that as a council, you can stand up and say, "Community, support us on this." So that's it.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right, City Council people, I, I just want to renew my responsibility for coming up with this idea in the first place. I wasn't trying to defuse the bomb necessarily, I was trying to contain the blowback on my colleagues.
There are, just really quick, Mayor, I have some questions for Chief Hillman. Can I, can we ask him to come to the podium, just to clarify some of the comments made by our residents?
Chief.
Is that, okay? Okay.
Sure. Chief Hillman, come on down. Thank you.
And just while Chief is coming up, I just want to, I think YK and I might have been called out as far as what we're doing and what's our skin in the game. I just want to remind people that I've been a resident of Folsom for 16 years. I own a business on Sutter Street on the 700 block, and I'm going on my eighth year. And I'm also a native of San Francisco, and the reason why I'm such an advocate of working to reduce homelessness is because I don't want where I live to become another San Francisco. So those are my comments there. But Chief, we have, we had a couple of residents that mentioned that we used to have three FTEs that were taken away from homelessness. So at this point, there's no one responding to calls related to situations that there are for the unhoused? Is that, is that a fair statement?
No, it's not. Members of Council, Rick Hillman, your chief of police, we have a problem-oriented policing team. The team was recently renamed in, earlier this year. It used to be our Crime Suppression Unit, but we took on a different name. Our mission is the same, to deal with problems that are occurring in our community. For years, those main problems have been homelessness and crimes and other issues that, that you've heard a lot about tonight. However, in this past year, crime has gone up quite a bit in Folsom, and so we've had to have that team move on to some other things. We've had a 400% increase in organized retail theft, over 100% increase in our robberies, and 53%, I think, increase in rapes. These are things that our team These are things that our team needs to focus on. Crimes against persons are more important to us than cleaning up homeless encampments. However, that is an important thing to do. We just don't have the resources available right now to do that. I am making a presentation, as was requested by the mayor, on April 23rd where I will talk about our crime stats and the issues of homelessness, how we are dealing with those.
Oh, thank you. Okay, there was another comment made by a resident about situations where someone is yelling, screaming, acting erratic. And there are protocols that our police department, that our police can take, can or can't take. Can you elaborate into the comment that was made that someone called in and they said, "Oh, we couldn't do anything. We couldn't do anything about it." If someone is screaming, acting erratic, appears to be having some form of a mental breakdown, what is the department's protocol?
We respond to those calls every day.
Right. And?
So, I, I can't say to a specific call. We handle close to a couple hundred calls a day, so I can't go over each call and say, "With that particular one, these were the circumstances as described, and therefore, we didn't respond." We do respond to these calls all day, every day.
And I think that there have been some comments, you know, on social media, predominantly about arrest them, you know, get them off the street. There has to be a cause, like something has to happen for RPD to arrest somebody who is yelling, screaming, and maybe acting erratic. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I just, I just want to make sure that, I don't want people to walk away from here thinking tonight that, that our police department does not do anything. There are protocols, and, you know, it's not against the law to scream and act erratic in the street. It's, something has to happen for our police department to step in and do something. Is that, I just want to make sure, like, I just want, I just don't want people thinking that we don't do anything if somebody is screaming and yelling.
We do our best to try to take care and resolve problems. We know that if we take somebody in for a mental health issue, we're taking them to the hospital, we're tying up hospital beds, and now our fire department's going to be standing at a hospital waiting in line with their staff for hours to see medical care. We cannot take people to the jail unless they've committed a certain degree of crime, and if we do take them to the jail, we know that, on average, we spend six to seven hours at the jail. So, that's an officer that's out of our city for that long of a time. Oftentimes, we give citations, and it may appear that we aren't doing anything, but a citation's issued on our phone, and it, it looks like we walk away, which is what we do, but we've given them a notice to appear. And we often see those turn into warrants later on because people don't appear.
Thank you, Chief. Those are the only questions I have.
I think Councilmember Roarbaugh wanted to try to speak. Councilmember Roarbaugh, can you try, see if your sound comes through?
Yeah.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Anna.
Okay, great. I first want to say thank you for all of your patience in the audience and those watching and have contacted and called. And I, you know, I wish I could be there in person. I'm at a conference in Monterey for, Monterey sounds like a fabulous place, but for economic development and working on, you know, economic revenue for our future. So, I wanted to make sure I called on this issue. Thank you again for expressing all your concerns. It is so important for our residents, business owners, and people that are invested in Folsom to voice their opinion, and nothing can be better than you coming to council, sending an email as well. So, I greatly appreciate that. It's frustrating to wait so long since October 10th. We had a great discussion about homeless and crime. You know, what I hear here is the first action step that we should take is to hear, or what I feel is the first action we should take is to hear from our own police department as to the impact of the increase in crime and homeless calls that they receive and their possible solutions. I know that they've been working hard and diligently to address this issue. They care about how all of you feel, and I think all, most of you in the audience and beyond feel, feel their empathy and care for you and how to protect us as residents. And that conversation is going to be April 23rd, and I really made sure to try to make sure that was an action item. So, if there was a potential to take action on something, that we could do that. So, I think that is the next step for everybody that came to express their feelings and then continued to take the time to express their feelings about what's going on, even after Mike, our mayor's, explanation. So, I've discussed here, in fact, I've had some really incredible conversations with developers, retailers, people that are interested in investing in Folsom, not building necessarily new, but revitalizing opportunities that we have already. And one of the concerns that comes up is homeless and crime. And so, us addressing this absolutely affects our future in Folsom. And I always kind of look at things as, what is the first thing that we can do to take action on that helps everything else become easier? And I believe that taking action on, as a council, providing resources for our police department or to combat the increase in homeless crime and transience is one of the major things that we can do that helps every other department and other, every other resident FAA organization in, within our city. If we fix this, everything helps. We're not going to fix it completely, but we definitely need to focus on that this is getting out of hand. The data, that data shows it. The police department's going to present that in April, I believe. But most importantly, what I wanted to express, that I applaud the audience for showing up for something that really matters to you and showing the council, myself, and others, and city staff, that this is one of your number-one concerns. There's nothing more valuable than you being in person and voicing that, and there's nothing more important we can do than not only listen to what you have to say, but then actually work towards action. I appreciate your patience in this matter. I appreciate that you want the council to invest your money in the ways that matter most to you, and this is your money, and we need to listen to it. Someone said, "Make sure you sign the petition for Prop 47." Absolutely, that's going to help everything, but that is not an excuse not to take action in this city now. Again, come to April 23rd, let your voices be heard. And I wish I was there in person so I could see everybody's faces, and, and you know how much I'm listening, but it's really nice to listen online and kind of get a different perspective, but I sure do miss being there in person. So, I've said enough. Thank you again. Thank you to the mayor for addressing right away and maybe alleviating, alleviating some people's concerns right away, but also allowing from the, for them to continue to voice it. So, again, thank you. Sorry I'm not there in person, but, and thank you for giving me the time to say my point of view.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roarbaugh.
Any further questions for me?
Yeah, Chief, is there an ordinance in Folsom that doesn't allow people to camp in the City of Folsom on public use areas like streets, bike trails, and stuff like that? Is it legal to camp?
I'm going to ask the city attorney to briefly explain, if you could, Mr. Wong, the Ninth Circuit ruling.
Thank you.
And we do need folks to put in a speaker card and approach the microphone so that it's picked up on TV next time. That would be great.
So, thank you, now I've seen the manager. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the quest, for the benefit of the audience, the question is whether there's a city ordinance prohibiting camping on public property. Many cities, including City of Folsom, used to have, and I think Folsom still does, such ordinance prohibiting camping on public property. And the Ninth Circuit, several years ago, struck down the criminal penalty provision of such ordinance so that, so that the homeless individuals, just like any regular citizens, can be present and, and use the public places that anybody, everybody can use without being penalized for being homeless. And that decision has been very controversial and certainly has greatly constrained cities within the Ninth Circuit jurisdiction area, which includes many, many states other than California, and, and the city's abilities to enforce homeless camping within those jurisdictions. That decision is now being challenged through the.
The city of San Diego challenges it.
Negative, sir, the.
No, that's.
I apologize. Allow me, please. So, that's been, that is being challenged, and it's going to be heard by the United States Supreme Court since there has been many, many, many support from local jurisdictions and also interest parties to overturn or limit the application of the Ninth Circuit decision. So, right now, the decision is still the law of the Ninth Circuit land. It doesn't apply across the nation, just within Ninth Circuit, and California is part of the Ninth Circuit. And hence, it's been a problem for many cities, including City of Folsom, to enforce our anti-camping ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Our congressman, Mr. Kylie, and others have put supporting letters in for that particular lawsuit that's going to go before the Supreme Court. So, with any luck, those decisions will be neutered or reduced in some way and give us some local control back. Any commentary?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate your desire to do something to address the homeless issue. I, I don't think what was proposed is the solution or the location, but I do want to address or kind of separate my comments into two different categories. With respect to the Y property, I think we all agree that that is, you know, a gateway to the city, a gateway to the historic district, and certainly, we'd like to see something special done with that property in the future. I do think the information from the Public Works Department about, you know, what would be needed if we wanted to do something there, if we wanted to have food trucks every month or whatever it is, was, was useful. I do have to say, it's a bit of an eyesore right now, kind of a junkyard, and I, I agree that it, I mean, I know that it has a very utilitarian purpose right now, and there's a hard, it's hard to make that look pretty, but I would like to see us look for alternative sites for an auxiliary courtyard. And also, Jim, we got to have PSVRR doing a better job of containing their stuff on that property. With regard, excuse me, to the homeless issue, I do think we need to wait to hear from Chief Hillman and the police department on April 23rd before we make any decisions. My philosophy has, it's very simple, and it has never changed. I think to the extent that we can connect people with services, we have an obligation as a community to do that. But if people refuse those services for whatever reason, I think we need to make it inconvenient for them to be homeless in our city. And I don't, I don't say that because I'm, I'm heartless or I don't care, but I think it has to be inconvenient and uncomfortable in order for them to want to make a change to their situation. So, a lot of great ideas that were mentioned tonight, some of those things, you know, we are doing. We do remove thousands and thousands of pounds of trash from camps every year. Our code enforcement and police department does a great job along with private contractors. We have a mental health clinician who rides with the police department forty hours a week to respond to a lot of these mental health calls, not just regarding the homeless, but, but anybody having a mental health crisis. We do have a shopping cart return service right now. I know you and I and many people regularly return those as we see fit, but we also do have a service where you can just text and say, "Hey, there's a shopping cart at the, you know, the Walmart parking lot that belongs to Trader Joe's or whatever," and we have the service that will, that will return that for you. So, if you don't have that contact information, you could contact anybody on the city council. Our numbers are on the website, and we will give you the numbers so that the community can help us with that. I think there are three action items that I would like to see possibly by the time we hear from Chief Hillman on, on April 23rd. Number one is, you know, you're required, if you own a business in the city, you're required to have a business certificate. So, we theoretically have a contact email address for every single business in this city. I would like for us to send everybody a trespassing enforcement authorization form. Every business ought to have one of those on file. Anytime somebody emails me with concerns about their business and the homeless, I say, "Please make sure you have this on file." That gives the police department the authority to go in and take care of somebody who is trespassing at your business if you are not there, if it's after hours. So, I'd like to see that be disseminated citywide. The second thing is, I think, you know, part of deciding what works and what doesn't, I think we have to have some really, really hard conversations, and some people are not going to be happy with me saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway. I think we need to have a conversation about if the winter shelter is doing more harm than good. And the reason I say that is, we know that we, I can cite a specific instance where we had a gentleman, you know, a couple years ago, who was a guest at the winter shelter many, many nights, many, many weeks. Once the winter shelter ended, our police department had over a hundred encounters with that gentleman over eighteen months. Luckily, we worked with the district attorney to try to get him, you know, to, get him to do some jail time for some of these, these issues that he had, where stalking misdemeanors or he had a felony thing, whatever. And so, I don't know if, if, if heart is willing to give up this information, but I think it would be very interesting to know of the people who are a guest in the winter shelter, are they then having interactions with our police department because they're cited for whatever? And, and the final thing is, and I, I appreciate the, the comments from folks about not feeling safe on the trails or in the parks or whatever, but this is the part I cannot stress enough. The rest of us, the eighty-five thousand of us who live in this city, who are law-abiding citizens, have got to use the trails and the parks and the public amenities the way that they were intended to discourage folks from using them for unintended ways. We, you know, we, we have strength in numbers. And so, if you want to walk on the trail or you want to go to a park and you need somebody, my cell phone is on the website, give me a call, text me, I'd be happy to come meet you. We have got to continue to use those public amenities. We cannot let them be overrun by people who are doing things that they should not be doing in our public service, in public facilities. So, those are the ends of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here, here. Thank you. YK, your thoughts?
Mayor, I think you begin with, you are going to make a motion, either A or pass.
Would, would you like me to make the motion officially now?
No, no. I, I'm going to choose the second one.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So, at least that's, that's the, you know, bottom line here, right? You know, where we are heading, so.
My motion will be to accept the report and do nothing.
Do nothing at this point on this one.
With, with this idea.
With this idea.
There's plenty of other things that we have.
There are so many.
Gotten from the discussion.
There's so many, because I want to make sure, you know, people hear that loud and clear. You know, some of the things, I think Mayor Aquino, Vice Mayor Aquino mentioned, hurting the people. I see the mom here. See, she's smiling, and she's volunteering with the heart. Thank you. And Jake's Journey Home, thank you. Okay, family, thank you. We all want to help those people who are really want to take the services. That's what I think Vice Mayor Aquino is also emphasizing. My points are, after listening to all of you, I don't have anything new to share because you all elected us to sit here. Mobile services is the one even most of us are, you know, feeling comfortable. Get to the people. Don't bring them to a location. Whosoever is that technology sales executive said, he's going for the customers, so they become the customers at that location. Also, Mayor, the C Click Fix, I'm a technologist, you know, somehow, we can agree how we can open up to the service providing people like Jake Journey Home, Powerhouse Ministries, or Hatta Folsom, where these incidents are happening in addition to our police department. I don't know whether it is there, but that's one thing definitely helps where it is. And also, the other one, Folsom is no short of smart people, right? After listening to all, I think it is a high time for us to pull that A-team to talk. We don't need to wait even for next week, you know, at least germinating that thought in your mind, passing it to city manager. Let's explore, bring those A-team people. We got to talk here. And also, I know we talk about, you know, we don't have money, we don't have money. I said a couple of times, we do. we do have money. We pay taxes to State of California, and quite a bit of our property tax go to county, and we pay the federal taxes. We have our fair share in grants programs there. We got to work hard. We got to show that we do have a problem. It's not the richest city I know on the earth here. We are facing so many problems. Our small businesses are suffering. We put a case to get our fair share of grant money. I heard the gentleman was saying, thank you, I heard the gentleman was saying, he got the 6.1 million's grant money. Well, if Algro can get it, you know, go for it. And also, I think I'm going to wait for 23rd, see how the, how the police department. I am agreeing, this situation is an emergency situation for our town. And stealing and theft is also very similar to emergency situation. If we can't control here, once it explodes, it's very hard to manage. So we have to treat this. I'm going to wait for the 23rd, then open up the emergency funds. We don't have to wait for the next fiscal budget year. There are so many ways we can solve this problem, and we need, we need solutions here right away. That's, I'm inclining on that one. And also, you know, before I make that one, you know, listen to the chief and, you know, the experts from our police department, what their stand is. It's important as well. Mayor, that's, that's my conclusion. You know, bring, bring the A-team. I think quite a few of them are here. Let, let them not go before signing off the, you know, the form to be part of that team. No, I'm, I'm in a serious note. I want to be one of them as well. Let's look for the solution manageable. Governments can't solve all the problems, but you are willing to come here to say so long. I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you who spoke from the bottom of the heart. You all said you are appreciating Powerhouse Ministry, Jake Journey Homes, and Hatta Folsom, they're all doing the services, who are receiving the services. But there is one sect where our problem is, we got to act sooner than later. Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, one very small, very fast thing. The police chief is coming in next meeting.
If you're going to speak, if I could ask you to come to the microphone, because you're not picked up on TV otherwise.
April, April 23rd.
April 23rd. Is there a way, a system that works for you guys, that we can submit some questions in advance so that we don't come up here and tear you guys apart because we don't know what's actually going to happen? If there's a way that we can submit, I had a question I would have loved to have asked him when he was standing here that would have alleviated so many things I'm upset about, and I don't know there's an opportunity to do that. So how do we do that?
So first of all, you can, our chief and our command staff are sitting right back there, and you can go talk to them. But yes, anytime, you can email, you can email me, you can email any of the council members and say, I'd really like to be able to, you know, address this question at the meeting. You can come and ask it at the meeting. You can send it ahead of time, and we can ask, and I can ask our chief, could you please work this in? We do that pretty frequently. When we're hearing like the same themes from people coming in, I'll reach out to department heads and say, be sure you cover this in your presentation. So please don't hesitate to reach out, and please don't hesitate to show up, like Councilmember Rorba said. Just like this is perfect. You can approach the podium, and you can also, we work for you, not the other way around. So there's our staff, and go talk to them and ask questions. That's what we're here for.
But if something occurs to you after you leave here, best just for continuity, send it to me and Elaine, and we'll make sure that it's something that's covered in the presentation that evening. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think we got to the end of this one with limited damage to my personal health. I, listen, no, I jokingly said it earlier, but I will say it again, okay? I asked all of you for this job, and I'm willing to take the heat if I have a bad idea, okay? I think there is some shred of a good idea buried in there. It probably is a mobile unit somewhere and not at that particular location. So that's all come through loud and clear. I want this dialogue to continue, though, because we frequently have meetings where there aren't a whole lot of people in attendance, and some of this stuff comes up in council comments at the end. And this, this spark of an idea, actually, I raised it a couple of times last year when it was just a spark of a thought. But anyway, I am really, really grateful that you all came this evening, and thank you for your comments, supportive or pointed. That's why we do these meetings, so that you can get those things out on the table so that we can take action that supports the community. So thank you very much.
Mike, can I ask you a question? Mayor?
Ms. Rorba, you want to try and get the last word after that?
No, I don't want a last word. I just, I am not sure if you're still planning on making a motion, but my, you know, my input is, I'm not sure we need a motion.
I, I am making the motion right now. I just wanted to get my comment out.
Well, I guess my suggestion is, I don't, you know, if you're going to say not to take action, I'm not sure we need a motion to not take action on this.
Probably true, but I think everybody would feel more comfortable if we put this one to bed officially.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Can you just restate?
Yeah, the motion is that, thank you, staff, for preparing the report. We now know that this idea might have cost $250,000, but we have no intention of proceeding with any further design activity supporting it. Second stand?
Second stand, yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchala?
Yes, yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes, and thank you. All right, we are on to the last part of our agenda now. Thank you, everybody. And don't feel like you have to stay for the last bits of this. Future agenda items. Does anybody want to put something on the table?
Yes, I have one. I would like to request that we repeal Chapter 9.64.010 of the Folsom Municipal Code. It actually dates back to 1968, and it talks about trespassing on business property. And it says that folks can be basically asked to leave or removed if they're notified in writing by the business or property owner, which obviously is quite outdated. I have already run this by the city attorney. He said he would have no issue with repealing it. So again, Chapter 9.64.010, I'm asking that we repeal that at a future meeting.
We can bring that back.
Yeah, please bring that one at the earliest possible time. Anything else?
No, Mayor, no. Last meeting, I usually make my points for next meeting. I put the surplus land with the city. Now I'm not going to bring that. We will talk.
Very good. Thank you.
We have 10.
No future.
Okay, fantastic. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Festival of Eggs will take place this Saturday at Lemby Park from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is our annual springtime event, which includes a pancake breakfast, free kids carnival games hosted by the Folsom Teen Council, entertainment, vendor displays, and lots of hands-on activities. The city will be hosting an Earth Day celebration on Saturday, April 20th. This free, family-friendly event brings the community together through volunteerism, fun activities, and inspiring exhibits that raise environmental awareness. The event begins at 9:00 a.m. with volunteer opportunities that include creek cleanup, trail cleanup, Arbor Day tree planting, and trail maintenance. And you can find out more at folsom.ca.us/earthday. And finally, repair and maintenance work on the city's water distribution system will require overnight northbound lane closures on the Rainbow Bridge tonight, and then again, April 2nd and 3rd. Northbound Greenback Lane between Folsom Auburn Road and Scott Street will be closed from 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Council, any further comment for this evening?
I just have a few. So I noticed that when people were sitting on this side, it's very difficult to see the screen. So I don't know if at some point when we get a little extra funding, but maybe put a screen on this side, because if you were sitting on this side, I watched, people, people cannot see what's really happening. And so that's a recommendation.
It's kind of a really awkward orientation in this room, I understand.
Yeah. And then I looked at this side and thought, okay, we do have room for potentially a screen on this side. And then the other comment is, I just want to thank you, Mayor Kozlowski, for bringing up an item that got us talking about the issue and the problems related to homelessness and how very real it is to people. And it's always great to see people come before the council, whether they agree or disagree. And I encourage residents that we have a budget process that will be happening in the next few months. And I just really encourage people to come and voice your opinion and share your thoughts. It's such an important part of really engaging and having us have residents that come and participate in the process. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
YK, anything?
Mayor, a quick one. I know I have a couple of them, but I'll stop. Last Wednesday, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. I always pull my hair how they are approving all those permits and building plans, shopping malls. It was very interesting, so thorough they are. But my, my main intent was there to explain to them about the practical problem I faced while they're designing placing the UESP S postbox units, not somewhere in the remote, more visible, under the light, maybe somebody's, you know, front yard where the cameras are.
Oh, in the subdivision plants you're talking about?
In subdivision plants, when the brand-new things are coming, we rather want to solve the problem up front at the start. So they took it very positive on that one. And also, you know, when the new construction is going on, there is Alder Creek Shopping Mall is coming, they approved as a gateway to the south of 50. And I sincerely requested, you know, how the parking lot tree structures. If you go to Target Shopping Mall, there is not even a single tree where you can park when it is 110 degrees temperature. It's very hot. How about the six-month-old kid has to sit back from a baby's shopping? It's going to be hot. That's what I explained. In fact, the owner right away, you know, so reacted. YK, we are putting at least a 45% to 60% covering tree canopy on the entire parking structure. So at least put those up front when they are planting that tree. That's why I went there. But putting that aside after my comments, man, those seven people are awesome.
We have a great planning commission.
We have a great plan. I told them, man, once in a while I talk about that, but I'm very relaxing after they're talking to the builders and all the plans and everything. That's, that's a great one. And the last but not least, as a councilman, sorry, city manager said, Easter extravaganza is coming this Saturday.
The egg extravaganza?
Yes. Festival of eggs.
Oh, there you go.
Festival of eggs. And Council Booth will be there. Please come by and have a conversation. If anybody missed this meeting, you want to come and talk to us, please feel free. That's okay. We want to listen to your concerns. Once again, thank you again for all the, you know, residents coming and sharing your thoughts. A good night, Folsom.
Just a couple of things. If you didn't see it in the Sacramento Business Journal today, the shops at Folsom Ranch, the first retail center south of 50, is fully leased. So great news. Got restaurants and a nail salon coming, and a credit union and a veterinarian office. So really great news for those folks on that side of town. I asked the mayor and some folks from the Air Quality Management District to join me last week on a Zoom call. There is interest in El Dorado County, possibly, for a clean freight train, meaning like a hydrogen fuel cell train, to bring biomass or agricultural mass, whatever you want to call it, basically things from the forest out from El Dorado County to Sacramento County. And they're talking about, of course, the rail that the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor, JPA owns. So anyway, just kind of very preliminary conversations, but, but interesting stuff there. And then I just wanted to thank you all. On the consent calendar tonight, of course, was the approval to put a plaque for the Cone Fate Mansion. The only reason I had to come to the council is because it's going to go in the public right-of-way on the little strip of grass that Mr. Fate maintains and waters, but does not own. But my long-term goal is to create a walking tour of the six properties in Folsom that are on the National Register of Historic Places. So if we can get this going, should be a good start.
What a great idea and a good place for us to wrap up tonight. I'm going to reserve any further comment for another day.
Councilmember Rorba?
She's still on?
No, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Sorry about that. Okay, I'm going to call us adjourned at 9:39. Thank you.